Okay, Mr. Squatrito, my.
Yeah.
My clock, my clock says it's just seven o'clock.
Start with this block and everything all. This piece of.
So I think you have to accept it. It might be the recording to let you know that we are recording this meeting.
Oh, I mean, I can't see. Can't see nobody.
Is it a prompt to you have to hit accept to accept the recording?
You use the mouse to click yes. That it's going to be recorded.
Yes.
Okay, did that work? Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So it's 7:00 PM. I can do a roll call vote for the planning board, not a vote, excuse me, roll call attendance for the planning board members. Armin Filati.
He's muted.
All right, yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Steven Katz.
Here.
Chuck Millard.
Yeah.
Tony Mergo.
Yeah.
Jerome Squatrito.
Yeah.
Ryan Clark.
Here.
Richard Righiro.
Yeah.
Thank you. So Tony, if you're ready, I think we can start the agenda.
Sure. Jerome, you want to open the meeting?
Yes. This planning board meeting will be officially open.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic which is safe. One nation. Under God, indivisible, liberate, justice, law, order and on board.
Ms. Chairman, first, our second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the February meeting. I would make a motion that we approve unless someone has an issue with it.
We're here second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Chairman, could you just ask if there's anyone opposed to approve the minutes?
Is anybody opposed?
Okay, hearing none there unanimously approved.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move San Francisco Street Extension for us ahead of the others.
Fine.
I'll second it.
That one and in Monhope.
Okay, so.
Yeah, let's reverse the order.
Yes, just reverse it. Yeah, San Francisco Street for us and then 180 Monhope Avenue next.
So Tony made the motion and I think Steve Katz seconded it.
I seconded it.
Ryan Clark seconded it. Thank you. So we'll do roll call. Armin Filati.
Aye.
Steven Katz.
Aye.
Chuck Millard.
Aye.
Tony Mergo.
Aye.
Jerome Squatrito.
Aye.
So the San Francisco Street Extension is extension requested from San Fran Developers LLC for a timeframe on completion of remaining improvements to May of 2022.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well, you, you, you need to do a roll call for something like that.
So Armin made the motion, Steve seconded it. Armin?
Aye.
Steve Katz.
Aye.
Chuck Millard.
Aye.
Tony Mergo.
Aye.
Jerome Squatrito.
Aye.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda would be 180 Monhope Ave, Bristol Self-Storage Public Informational Meeting and Possible Action. By the Board on the Major Land Development Subdivision Proposal for redevelopment redevelopment of the subject property as follows. The property, property is currently with a former restaurant building, former commercial building, a former mixed-use building, and a daycare that is currently operating. The development proposal is to subdivide the property into two lots and construct a three-story self-storage facility at a total of eighty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-two square feet. On proposed lot number one. With an area of two hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-three square feet of land. And the existing daycare will be relocated to a new building on proposed lot two, which will have twenty thousand square feet of land, all other buildings on the site to be demolished. Property located at 180 Monhope Ave, Lot 41, Lot 4, owner, Monhope LLC, applicant DXDSSF1Land LLC, Zone General Business. Also recommendation to the zoning board and special use permit and variances needed for parking and loading areas.
So can I just say, I think the. If someone could let me know who to share screen. I will allow the developers to share the screen for their presentation and I also want to say. We have folks on the phone and if you, when we're at the public speaking part of this, if you want to speak. You would raise your hand by dialing star nine and then you would mute or unmute yourself by star six for the folks who are calling in. So Mr. Regan, if you want me to share screen with anybody, just let me know and I will do that so we can have a presentation.
I will, Diane. Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. I'm Peter Regan. Firm of Sayar Regan and Theya, representing DXDSSF1Land LLC, which for the sake of time tonight, I'm going to shorten that to DXD. Here tonight for this proposed subdivision and redevelopment of the site at 180 Mount Hope Avenue, which is located in the general business zone. You're all familiar with this site. It contains just under seven acres. Existing and former uses, including a restaurant and bar, landscaping, recently a boat storage facility, and currently the Little Angels Daycare. It's got about four hundred and twenty-eight feet.
Okay, yeah. I'm going to mute. I'm sorry, if I can just remind everybody to please mute themselves. Thank you.
So the site's got about four hundred and twenty-eight feet of frontage on Mount Hope, another three hundred and thirty-two feet of frontage on DeWolf Avenue. Currently four structures on the site, all of which will be removed. There's also a large amount of pavement on this property that currently drains untreated into wetland area in the rear. And the plan is to subdivide the site into two conforming lots. The first lot would have just over two hundred and eighty thousand square feet with an indoor. Climate-controlled self-storage facility. That use is permitted in the GB zone by special use permit and we believe that that will be a much less intense use than the current restaurant and bar that are there now. And as the current daycare, we think is important to the community, DXD plans to construct a replacement structure. On Lot Two, which will be a conforming lot of twenty thousand square feet to allow the daycare to remain in the neighborhood. And that use is allowed by right in the GB zone. The buildings that are being proposed are all fully conforming with zoning requirements. However, in addition to the special use permit. We will be seeking dimensional variances for parking and for signage on parking. Based on industry standards, DXD's own experience with similar facilities as well as trip generation data. We're proposing to provide twenty-four off-street spaces. Which will be shared with the daycare with a common entrance. The town doesn't actually have a specific parking standard for this use, but under the ordinance, it would require upwards of ninety spaces, which we think would be grossly excessive and. Frankly, that amount of pavement would be problematic when it comes to drainage and the wetlands. We're also proposing to provide two loading spaces versus the three that the ordinance would require. And lastly. We will be seeking from the zoning board a variance for what we believe is a modest amount of signage and all of which we will review with you in detail tonight. I've got five witnesses with us here this evening. First is James Hamilton from DXD who can explain the operational aspects of what's being proposed. Lynn Small of Northeast Engineers, our civil engineer for the project, Herman Peralta of Beta Group, who's our traffic engineer. And can review the traffic study that was done for the site. Perry Petrillo, our architect, and Peter Scotty, who is our real estate expert. So with that, what I'd like to do is have Lynn Small. Explain the existing conditions and what's being proposed. And I know that Ms. Small's been recognized as an expert by the board in civil engineering in the past. It asked that she be so recognized this evening.
Okay, um. I will share my screen with you. Oh, I'm sorry. Lynn Small, Northeast Engineers. We're at Six Valley Road in Middletown, Rhode Island. So I have just shared the screen of, this is the site plans that we had submitted from the Civil for the project site. It's comprised of three sheets. One is your cover sheet here, which gives you a map and. Identification of where the site is. Well, I'm going to go right to the existing conditions plan, which is sheet two. Many of you are familiar with the property. It's a, it's a rather large lot that's bisected by a wetland series. If you can see my little hand here, this is all a wetland. There's a little bit of high area here where I suppose you could walk through and then there's some existing solar panels in the rear of the property. On the front side of the property, which fronts on Mount Hope Ave, we have an existing rest. Restaurant, which is up against the set, the property lines, right on the property lines, your front property line and. The west property line. And then there's another structure that's closer up to the road and we have. I'm sorry?
I think that was just a random. I'm going to, I'm going to try to go through and make sure everybody, please, if you're not. Speaking, you need to mute yourself. Thank you.
And then the building that I have my hand on right now, that is the existing daycare that we will demolish as part of this, the. Project and then there's another outbuilding here. The project includes. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me just quickly show you where the outlines of the asphalt are. So this, this area all the way out to DeWolf is. All paved for the parking, for the various structures on the site. The project proposes to demolish everything, all the structures and you can see that several of them. This wetland would be subject to a fifty-foot setback, which extends, you know, out to here. So this building back here inside the fifty-foot setback, it's too close to the wetland. This, the daycare facility that is also inside the perimeter wetland. Setbacks. So we'll be taking those out and letting those areas revegetate. Will also be demolishing the restaurant, which is, like I said, is up against the front setback on Mount Hope Avenue and this. Western setback, which is a residential property. There are no existing drainage provisions for any of the impervious surface or site. Uses that are in place right now. And now I just put up the proposed conditions plan for you. This is. A master plan level. We have the daycare, which is at the top of the screen and. The subdivision lot line is right here where I have outlined with my hand here. And then as you move down the screen or, or west, you get to the curb cut that we'll have from Mount Hope. Which goes into some shared parking. This parking will be available for both the daycare and the storage facility. The main office is right here at that front corner and then you would go down around the back and this is how you get into. If you already have an account with the company, you'll be able to access your units from back here and you don't have to go through the main office. And then this road, this access drive. Ties into the curb cut. Basically that exists today. What we are doing is reducing the impervious area across the site. We'll be demoing the buildings in the asphalt. Like I said, we'll be bringing this new building, we'll be compliant with all of the setbacks. And dimensional regulations for the zoning district, as will the new daycare facility. And we're moving everything as far away from that wetland as we can. In addition to that, we have placeholders right now for our drainage features that'll be designed. Before you see us at the next stage. Which will provide more quality treatment that's required for the project and it will discharge. Where the site drains today towards that wetland feature. But as you can see, here is your fifty-foot setback line and we're going to be fully maintain, maintaining that separation that's required.
And Lynn, right now that there is, that there's a, the existing buildings are within that setback. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, and you, you can almost better see it on this plan because we have the fifty-foot line on for you. This building is entirely within it. And a majority, this section of the daycare is in it. So about half, I would say, of the daycare facility is inside that. Perimeter wetland. So I think the DEM will be happy about that, as well as any of the animals and plantings inside the wetland. The project, once we get through this step with you, we'll have to do the full engineering designs. Which will include the utility connections, the grading for the site, the drainage designs. And then this project is also going to be subject to a state permit review. The RIDM is going to review it through their wetlands program and their ripdies program. Excuse me, because we have over an acre of disturbance. So the designs aren't intended to be completely compliant with the state code requirements for the engineering.
Lynn, could you just talk about the, the circulation? I know you mentioned that all the access to the building is either through the office on the corner and, and once people have rented a unit, all the access is through the rear of the building. But in terms of vehicles coming and, and, you know, what you've done to make sure that there's adequate turning radiuses for emergency vehicles, et cetera?
So the, I, I'm in the middle of corresponding with Robert Ferguson from the fire department. Just to get confirmation on the turning radius. It's only this point that I'm questioning with him that I want to confirm, but the, the access drives that we have on this property are twenty-four foot wide. So that exceeds National Fire Code and that's what your, your fire department defers to is twenty feet. It's a minimum of twenty feet wide that they would ask for, for a fire lane. We have twenty-four feet, so they're completely happy with that. I just want to make sure, they've said they're fine with this turn, but I just want to make sure they're understanding my question. When I ask them if they're okay with this, this turn. They should be because it's no different than this turn for Woodbine. Being twenty-four feet wide, any corner or intersection with a roadway is basically the same condition that you're seeing in that corner. But the, the building's going to be sprinkled, so fire prevention is not. Something that's going to be a hazard for town at all.
And with regard to the streetscape, is there sidewalk being provided?
Yeah, one of the things that we were asked to add to the project that part of the TRC is to have, we have internal, you know, walkway and sidewalk. And then it connects to a sidewalk that'll go across the frontage of the property along the roadway.
And that'll go along the entire frontage of the property?
Yes.
And you mentioned, Lynn, that we'd meet the, the buildings are conforming with the zoning requirements, does meet the height requirements as well?
It does. As everyone is aware, that's statewide code now for average existing grade across the footprint of the building. This zoning district, I believe, is thirty-five feet tall and we're making sure that we're not asking for any relief from the height.
Okay, and, and how does that compare with, are there other buildings in that area of that height or higher?
There are. If you would give me a second, I can stop this sharing, change screen. To show you a different PDF that includes some details on that.
Come on in.
So what we've done on this plan is. Got in the approximate height of the.
Because something over here blocks.
I'm sorry, Jerome.
See here.
So this includes, you can see, we just put in red. The approximate height of some of the structures that are in the immediate vicinity of the. Project, including the project itself. The building, the restaurant, right now is right up against the front setback and the western setback, but it's not as tall. It doesn't go all the way to the thirty-five feet. The ones across the street are closer to, and then we have one that exceeds the height, that's further east. Which is going to be right across the street, basically, from the front corner of the building.
And that's the building that's forty-four feet tall?
That's the building that's forty-four feet tall, yeah. And now the, the new building that we're proposing is going to be right at or close to the thirty-five foot. Limitation for the town, but we will be bringing it back to the setback lines and then they'll be landscaping in, in front of it. So that's going to help. Make that feel like it's not that tall, but it fits within the character of the area as far as the height is concerned there and that's easy to see from this. This explanation. I do have it as an, as a roadside view if you'd like to see what that looks like as well. Do you want me to put that one on?
Yeah, please.
This is okay.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this basically just includes a dimension on those structures. On how we measured those that are immediately across the street from the project site. And you can see to the far left of the screen is the corner of the restaurant. Structure.
Lynn, just to get back to the, the site plan. In terms of parking. There is a, a shared drive with the daycare that will allow those businesses with people coming at different hours to share the parking. Is that correct?
Yeah, so typically what you see at a storage facility is the park, you don't, it's not a high demand of parking. All day long during your business day. It might be on the weekend, you might get some people coming by to grab some stuff out of their units. But the daycare has a different peak use. So we do have the required parking for the daycare based on its. Number of. Children and teachers right next to the building itself, but in addition to that, we have some directly across the aisle. If they have to, they can use that as well. We don't expect there to be. Any high demand in parking, except potentially where, you know, when people come to pick up their kids. If everybody comes at the same time, that's when they might use some of these other spaces that are across the aisle. But I, but like I said, the storage facility isn't going to have a very high demand on parking at all.
And just in, in the event that. You know, the, the calculations. We determine that we needed additional parking in the future. Is there room to put other parking and particularly pervious parking area for overflow parking if that was necessary?
Yeah, we'd be able to put some, you know, reinforced grass type parking elsewhere on the site. If we found that we had a high demand. This entire access driveway could. We can fit an entire row of parking outside the fifty-foot perimeter. So that, that would be a long stretch of additional parking. That we can make available if we needed, if we found that we needed to do that. What is encouraged, and I believe Bristol is the same. The state wants you to minimize impervious surfaces as much as you can. From an environmental standpoint, it's beneficial to minimize asphalt. And then provide the stormwater. And my previous experience is working in Bristol. You guys also look that way favorably, usually on a project to minimize that impervious surface because you recognize you don't want oceans of asphalt for no reason. So.
Particularly true where we've got a wetland in the back.
Yeah, and the DEM is going to be pleased to that we're making all of those improvements and pulling those impervious surfaces out, letting this revegetate and then minimizing the asphalt on the site.
Okay, and, and just in terms of the drainage and the, and the, you know, the, the, what's going to be provided with this project, is, is it a improvement over what's there now?
It's, it's a huge improvement. There are no provisions for stormwater on this site right now. And this project, as we have it designed, proposes a reduction in your impervious surface. So you have that. Twofold benefit is we're reducing the amount of impervious and then the impervious we're providing, we're providing stormwater for and more quality treatment. So. The, the town, the town will have a huge benefit, specifically this wetland will have a nice benefit for having those provisions in place.
Right, and just one last question. I know we, we had some comments that came out of the TRC process, which went favorably a week or so ago. Does this current plan address any of those concerns that were raised or questions that were raised during the TRC?
I mean, we made revisions to this plan based on the TRC meetings and comments that we received from PAR. So that's all reflected on these plans. As far as the neighborhood outreach, the submission was already made. So there's no revisions on the plans based on that, that meeting.
That's all the questions I have for Lynn unless the board has any questions.
Hi, it's Anthony here. Lynn, what is the setback from the street on the proposed building?
I just need one second here so I can zoom in to the. Can't see very well. So the set, the front setback for this zoning district. It's listed in our plan right here. Twenty-five feet and your side setback is. Well, we have twenty-five feet here because it's a residential building on the side. Your ordinance requires more. If you have a commercial building next to a residentially used or zoned property, you have to provide a larger setback. But the front is twenty-five feet and we need that for the new building. But you can see the outline of the existing structure right here.
Right.
Yeah, it goes, it goes right up to the property line. Yeah, so.
And then is there, do you have any elevations of the proposed daycare?
The proposed daycare, we don't have elevations, but the architect will be providing you some elevation and review of the commercial building.
Okay, so the facade will kind of match the, the storage building?
We'll definitely want to make sure everything looks good together. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we will have the. Yeah, and we, we will have the architect uh this evening and, and he'll be happy to answer those questions as well.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Jerome, I have a question. Do you have a contract with the uh, with the daycare center?
I can have uh James Hamilton from D X D uh answer that question when he testifies. I know that there have been a, a number of discussions. I don't know if they have an actual contract at this point.
Okay, I will um.
Great, thank you.
But just one question. What is the current requirement for parking spaces?
The requirement for uh the daycare would be fourteen spaces. The requirement for, just as sort of the general requirement, um, which is not specific to a, an indoor self-storage facility. Would be one space for every thousand square feet of gross floor area, which would be a total of eighty seven spaces. Now, because we have a shared uh drive and entry, the total parking gets reduced by uh ten percent. But um, so that gets reduced for the self-storage facility down to about seventy seven spaces is what would be required. Um, and we'll have uh a testimony in terms of what we believe is uh.
These spaces are you, are you proposing right now?
We're proposing a total of twenty four spaces uh that would be shared between the two.
Daycare and the uh self-store.
Correct, plus in addition to, to loading spaces.
Like, so that, those are just the two loading spaces for people coming and going?
Uh, those are the loading spaces in the back of the building for people who might uh be, need to, to bring in some larger items into the building.
Jerome, I, I have a question.
True.
Um. Yeah, let me preface my comments by saying this, I, I, I think the, the drawings uh that have been submitted uh are attractive. However, um, I know we need to hear more testimony, but Diane, I, I, I'm confused about the location. I mean, we've had these things turned down in the manufacturing zone. So I, I'm a little concerned about the fact that it's in a residential neighborhood. Yeah, wha- what's, what's up is, what's been the town's position in the past?
So this is a general business zone. And it, it is a general business zone that allows um business uses. In this zoning district, a storage facility is allowed as a special use permit use. Which means that the zoning board has to also review it and determine if this particularly, particular general business zone property is an appropriate property for the uh, for the use. Um, it's allowed in general business, but not every general business owned property. Might be a good property for this type of use. So that's something that the zoning board will have to review. Um, you'll be making a recommendation or you're being asked to make a recommendation to them. The other thing I wanted to say is with regard to the manufacturing zone, we have um prohibitions on this use. Because of the, you know, the fact that we want the manufacturing land to be. Reserved for, you know, manufacturing jobs. Uh, but this particular use is a special use permit use in the general business zone.
I guess that answers my question.
Yeah, and I, and I just, just to chime in on that, we've seen that in other communities where they, the areas where they have uh, are hoping to bring in businesses that will create jobs. Those, they want to save those spaces for those sorts of businesses and not for warehouses or self-storage sorts of facilities. Um, anybody have any more questions for Lynn Small? Um, if, if not, then I'll ask uh Herman Peralta uh from Beta Group to testify, please.
Evening.
Evening. Um, I, I did provide um the one with a copy of uh Herman's resume and C V. Um, Mr. Peralta, you're Rhode Island Registered Professional Engineer?
Correct.
And you're a Senior Traffic Engineer with Beta Group?
I am.
Uh, could you, just, just because I don't know if you've actually testified in front of this particular board, uh just briefly describe your education and experience as a traffic engineer?
Sure, um, I have a Bachelor's of Science degree in Civil and Environmental Engineering from the University of Rhode Island. Um, I have about fifteen years of experience in uh transportation engineering, uh with a primary focus in traffic.
And uh, and what sort of uh projects you work on particularly as a traffic engineer?
Uh, I work on uh different traffic projects uh that include traffic impact studies uh such as this one for the uh self-storage. Uh, I've done traffic operations, you know, traffic safety improvements, traffic management, um, and those are some of the uh few examples that I've worked on.
And, and have you been uh recognized as a traffic expert and testimony before other boards and commissions in Rhode Island and Massachusetts?
Ah, yes, I have been uh recognized as a traffic expert um before, uh multiple boards and commissions uh in multiple cities and towns. Uh, I mean, both Rhode Island and Massachusetts.
Okay, and could you just mention a few of the ones that you've testified in?
Sure, I've testified multiple times on uh town of Middletown, um, you know, nearby Newport. Um, I've also testified um in Tiverton and I've also testified multiple um cities, um, you know, further west with, you know, city Warwick. North Providence, Pawtucket, and also Providence. And then um some neighboring towns in Massachusetts include New Bedford, uh North Attleboro, Attleboro, Douglas.
Thank you. Um, I'd ask that Mr. Peralto be recognized as a traffic expert.
So move.
Thank you. Um, so Mr. Peralto, Beta Group um was, was retained by D X D to uh conduct a traffic and parking assessment for this project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and could you just explain briefly the steps that you took to conduct that assessment and analysis?
Uh, sure, um, as part of the traffic assessment, uh Beta completed, you know, multiple tasks. Um, that's including, you know, inventory of the servicing roadways. Uh, we collected traffic data. Um, estimated the trips that will be generated by the proposed self-storage. And then evaluated both existing and future conditions and then made recommendations if necessary um to, to be able to provide safe and efficient access to the proposed site.
Okay, and you prepared a written report that's been provided to the board? Is that correct?
Correct, that includes the appropriate attachments.
Okay, and, and you have a, a, a presentation uh to walk the board through um that report, is that correct?
Yes.
Diane, if, if, if Herman could share his screen, please?
Absolutely. Um, Herman, are you able to do it or do I need to uh?
Uh, uh, let me, let me see, let me check if I can actually do it. Looks like I can, looks like I can.
Great.
One second. All right, can everybody see this?
Yep.
Yeah, great.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so um, again, the uh proposed self-storage is at a one eighty Mount Hope Avenue, uh, in Rhode Island. Again, Beta uh conducted the uh traffic impact assessment study for the proposed development. Uh, again, my name is Herman Peralta. I'm a Senior Traffic Engineer with Beta Group and I'm a, a Registered Professional Engineer in Rhode Island. Uh, just a few points that I like to uh discuss uh this evening uh briefly. Um, we've done a, you know, we, I want to just briefly discuss a task completed as part of the study. Um, the existing conditions of the project area, um, the safety analysis that we conducted. And then just discuss a little bit about the site circulation, access and parking, uh which Ms. Mall has touched upon earlier. And then the trips and operations for, uh, for the development. Uh, so. As I mentioned earlier, uh, we did an inventory of the physical characteristics of the servicing roadways, uh that includes Mount Hope Avenue. Uh, DeWolfe Avenue and Medicom Avenue. Uh, we collected traffic data uh that included manual turn of movie counts at the, the study intersections. And also an automatic traffic record accounts along Mount Hope Avenue, uh which will be the main servicing roadways to the site. Uh, we've also obtained crash data from the local police department uh to determine if there's any um safety issues within the project area. Um, we then estimated the traffic volumes uh for the proposed self-storage. Uh, using the I T E trip generation manual, uh which is a standard national guideline. Um, and then we evaluated again the existing and future build conditions. And then uh we made recommendations for mitigation if necessary. So just a little bit about the existing conditions, uh the site is located on the southern, uh southern side of Mount Hope Avenue. Uh, with frontage also in DeWolfe Avenue. Uh, land use in the project area is uh predominantly residential in nature with some commercial properties in the vicinity of Medicom Avenue. Uh, based on the traffic volumes that we have collected on Mount Hope Avenue. Mount Hope Avenue services a low daily um hourly volume of a hundred fifty vehicles per hour. And then during the peak hour, approximately two hundred vehicles um per hour. Uh, our mo- main focus um of the study is at the intersection of Mo- Mount Hope Avenue with Medicom Avenue and also at the site driveways. Uh, relating to the safety analysis, uh we investigated the roadway geometry of the servicing roadways. Again, we looked at uh Mount Hope Avenue, uh DeWolfe Avenue and also Medicom Avenue. Uh, we specifically reviewed the site distances at the study intersections. Uh, which is the study intersection of Mount Hope with Medicom, uh Mount Hope with the site driveway and also uh DeWolfe Avenue with the site driveway. So all three study intersections uh provide more than sufficient site distances, so providing safe access to the site. Um, we then reviewed the crash data uh from the local police department. Uh, there were seven crashes. Um, with uh two minor injuries. Um, so there was an average of about two crashes per year, which is uh very low. Uh, based on our findings and our um investigation of the roadway geometry, um, and also the crash um data. Uh, there was no required safety improvements uh based on our findings. Uh, relating to the site circulation, access and parking, uh main access um uh will be provided on Mount Ho- Mount Hope Avenue. Uh, with secondary access in DeWolfe Avenue. Uh, Mr. Regan uh has stated earlier, we are providing twenty four spaces um for the site. Uh, ten spaces for the self-storage and in four spaces for the daycare. Uh, the fourteen spaces for the daycare meets zoning regulations. Um, the ten spaces for the self-storage does not. However, uh, you know, based on our um. Estimate um using the I T E parking generation manual. For the self-storage, nine parking spaces is required for the self-storage. This actually, you know, um, this actually is um, you know, matches corresponds to the, the, the number of trips that will be generated by the self-storage. Uh, during the weekday P and peak hour, we're anticipating fourteen trips with seven vehicles entering, seven vehicles exiting. And then during the Saturday uh midday peak hour, we're looking at about uh fifteen uh trips with nine, nine vehicles entering and seven vehicles exiting. So uh six vehicles exiting. So as you can see, the number of parking required um corresponds with the um, the, the trips that will be generated by the self-storage, which is very low. Um, it's also, you know, important to note, um, as previously mentioned, the schedule of both businesses um on-site works well. Um, as the peak demands for the two uses uh do not coincide. So we, we're talking about the uh self-storage and also the daycare center. Where the uh peak demands for the um self-storage again does not coincide with the um, with the um daycare center. So uh that includes where the daycare center is actually um closed during the weekend with the self-storage. Uh, peak demand occurring during the weekend. So there's um ample additional um parking for the self-storage during the weekend.
And, and Herman, um, i- i- comparing the uh traffic that would be expected. With the proposed project to the uses that are there now, including the restaurant and bar. How, how does the, the anticipated traffic from what's being proposed compared to what's there now?
Well, the self, self-storage is definitely a, a, a much um less um extensive, extensive use than what's proposed, uh what's existing with the uh restaurant. Uh, and anticipate, you know, probably close to, close to five times less traffic that will be generated by the self-storage compared to the um existing restaurant.
Uh, and would that traffic then also be confined to a, a shorter period of time based on the hours of operation with the, the self-storage facility closing at nine o'clock?
That's correct. Um, you know, peak times will be weekday P and peak, peak hour and then Saturday midday peak hour again with the, with the um. Daycare center being closed in the weekend, there's um ample parking for the um, for the self-storage.
And um. Do you, in your opinion, would this uh result in any increase in traffic? Or any result in any hazardous conditions in the neighborhood?
Uh, based on the site, site access and circulation, um in combination with the less extensive use of the site and the sufficient site distances of the site drivers, uh there will be no hazardous conditions uh relating to traffic.
And, and in your opinions, the, the amount of parking that's being proposed adequate uh to uh uh provide for the proposed uses?
Correct, it is adequate um based on, you know, the studies, um, the extensive studies has been done um with the I T of generate, uh parking generation manual. Um, so that's, that's definitely um ample, especially the fact that during the weekend, the daycare center will be closed as I previously mentioned.
So the questions I have for Mr. Peralto, if the board has any questions?
Uh, Herman, um.
Yep.
Now, when this, when you first, when, if this happens, when you first open. Do you expect to be a, have a little bit of a surge of people coming in like the store? I mean, you're looking at seven hundred units there. Like, y- you can't be thinking there's only going to be five cars coming in or five cars leaving when the place first opens.
Yeah, my anticipation will be gradual. It's not, you know, it's not like a, a Chick-fil-A where everybody's, you know, really um excited about um chicken fingers. So uh, you know, self-storage is just gonna, gonna be a gradual increase and um, they're, they're probably going to be starting off, you know, um, you know, low, low demand. And then it'll probably increase um gradually.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, I do have another question for him. Herman, when you did the traffic study, uh heading uh east on um. On Monhole, right, and then you want to take a left.
Yep.
Onto uh Medicom Avenue. Many times that business that's on the corner there, that repair garage facility, they have cars parked right out like. You know, right on the edge of the road and it's really, really hard to see around there. I mean, you've got to pull quite a bit. Onto Medicom Avenue to take a left there. Did you notice that?
Um, when I was out there, did not notice that. Um, there was no parked vehicles at that corner. Um, but that again, that's, you know, I don't know what, where the property line is. And that's something the, the town will probably have to, you know, uh coordinate with the business owner to make sure there's no um parking at that corner. Um, if there's no parking space um provided.
Yeah, well, I, I think they're allowed, I think that property goes right out to Medicom Ave, so.
Okay.
But I, I did, I did notice that and it, it, I, I go there by there quite a bit.
Right, yeah.
Sometimes it can be tough to take a left.
Oh, definitely, yeah, I definitely understand you. Um, because there's, I think there's a, there's a paved, it's not really a paved sidewalk, but it's all open. Um, it's all open pavement there. But the vehicle shouldn't be encroaching a minimum of six feet from the curb line.
Yeah, sometimes they are though, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's not really your issue, but I was just wondering if you noticed the same thing. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry, but the um, the board's going to be asking questions and then when they're through with the presentation and the board's questions will open it up for uh the public's uh participation.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just hang on, you'll get, you'll get a, a chance momentarily.
Uh, if, if that's all we have uh for, for Herman, then I'm going to ask Perry Petrillo, our architect, to uh, to speak. And I believe I'm going to need to share my screen.
Let me stop sharing, there we go.
Okay. All right, can everybody see that?
No.
Okay. Says I'm screen sharing.
What we see is your list of files.
Okay. Let me see if I can uh. One second. Can you see the plan now?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So we've got Perry Petrillo of Petrillo Architects. Perry, you're a registered architect, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And and where are you currently licensed?
Currently licensed in twenty-five states. Rhode Island being one of them.
There you go. And and your office is in New Jersey, correct?
My office is in New Jersey.
And how did you, how'd you come to work on this project?
I have done work for this developer before and. As it may come to be, and it's kind of a unique situation for me. I actually graduated from Roger Williams in nineteen eighty-eight. So I have a pretty good, pretty good familiarity of Bristol, having lived there for numerous years and enjoying. Its culture, people, scale and architecture. So. I have a pretty good background on on the area. In fact, my daughter lives in Bristol, so I frequent there often, so I'm still I'm still there.
Great. Could you just explain to the board your your approach to the design of this building and how you went about putting that together?
Sure, so. You know, given the fact that. I spent a lot of time there, I kind of understand. The area a little bit and when approached with this. It was kind of taking a step back and looking at. How a building of. With with a large facade could be broken up in order to fit an environment and a vernacular such as Mount Hope Ave. Just talking about the site here a little bit. Before we get into elevations. As mentioned by Miss Small, the existing structure. Sits right on the property line, the restaurant sits right on the front property line. The new building or our proposed building is roughly twenty-five feet back. That's important. It's important from a couple of things and we'll get into that a little bit, but. Our outermost point on the building is twenty-four, twenty-five feet back, excuse me. But the building does have movement to it and undulating form across the front facade. So it actually goes from twenty-five foot setback to thirty foot setbacks to twenty-seven and a half. So there there is a, there is movement consistent across the front of the building. On Mount Hope Ave in the northeast corner. Is the main entry office area lobby to the facility. So your customer would go there for their initial sign up. Or to take a tour or to see a facility that they might want to lease or rent. Adjacent to that, on that eastern side is also an access door. That the customer could use to access their. Unit. Mostly for a quick in and out or a smaller pickup or or delivery or drop off of an item. Around the rear of the building circulating around. As Miss Small mentioned, there is a loading zone in the middle. Our loading zone is actually recessed into the building. Roughly forty feet and it's below the second floor line. Actually, it's below the third floor line because it's a two-story space. That space actually has a roll grill on it, a roll-up grill. That after hours will be closed. So that access to that loading or delivery point is is not not available. Or secure, I should say. The loading zone area is strictly a at-grade loading. There's no loading dock. It's strictly at-grade. Customer can bring their goods in there and then circulate into the building and either use an elevator or stay on the floor that they are out. The loading area is forty feet in depth. So this is intended specifically for an SU thirty box truck. Similar to a U-Haul. It's not intended and it's not meant for. Large tractor trailer or moving trucks to be using this facility. This facility is strictly for. Intended for mostly residential storage. The footprint itself, our our footprint of the building is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty square feet. Again, it's three stories. The full area of the building. Square footage wise is eighty-seven thousand four twenty. If you were to count the loading dock area in that, it would be eighty-nine thousand eight twenty. Again, that's that's enclosed within the building, but it's open air, so. That's where footage I gave you is as a full. With regard to the project design and design understanding. The design approach and Peter Arnold, can we switch to the rendering? Thank you. The design approach for this was to integrate. Into the existing vernacular of Mount Hope Ave.
And are you seeing the rendering?
Not yet.
All right, let me.
I'll give you a minute.
Get out of that one. You see that?
Not yet.
All right, I'm sorry about that.
That's right. There we go. So this is one of our perspective views. This is looking west on Mount Hope Ave. That front corner that you see there is the main entry lobby office area for the facility. Again, so our approach was to integrate this project into the existing vernacular of Mount Hope Ave. When you start looking at the important considerations, which are scale and proportions, it's it's how do you give this a residential feel? Within the context that we're in. And basically, the the approach we took was to. Divvy this up into multiple facades. And when you start divvying it up into multiple facades, you start looking at how. The accumulation of them come together and to me. It was almost as though we were creating sort of this downtown scape or architectural. Building scape. And Peter, can we switch to the storyboard for a second? So one of the things we did was we took a step back and kind of put a compilation of various buildings in Bristol together. To create sort of a storyboard that we use sort of as a. Maybe a little bit of a guide, but kind of. An example to pull scale and proportions. And just different mannerisms together that fit and play off of some of Bristol's. Sort of successful buildings in town. And if you look through this, some of this is individual structures. And some of this is a combination of multiple structures. And when you start playing again with the facade that we have with the multiple building facades. It kind of reminds me of this downtown streetscape and and that's the way we sort of proceeded with this. Peter, can we go back to? The rendering? So our intention, and this is the second rendering, so the second rendering is looking east on Mount Hope Ave. Again, you know, the thought here is how do we bring together scale proportions, material, roof lines and architectural elements? To create basically a well-proportioned facade that fits the street vernacular that's there. Our building height, as Miss Small mentioned, is under the thirty-five feet. But I think it's important to also mention that. At the twenty-five foot setback line for the a majority of the building. Our eaves are at just over twenty-one, twenty-two feet. And then that roof pitch is back, so you're not hitting that roughly thirty-four, thirty-five foot mark. Until you're thirty-five, thirty-six, forty feet back from the property line. So again, that that scale and proportions is a key element in here. And what we tried to do is hide or lose that third floor within the roof line along the building. Again, you've got movement across the front, giving you that undulating form ac- across the front facade. And we also carried that along the sides of the building also, so there's some movement and some roof lines and character. And you can see that on this western side of the building, a little bit peeking out there. So that that wall is not just a a hard, long blank canvas. Along the front, what we've also done is some of the fenestrations that occur. We have made them live and what I mean by live is they'll actually give you a peek into the building. At different points so that the building actually take has some life to it and you can see in. At certain times of day, there may be a light on. Our intent in that is that there won't be lights on all night long, lights will be on a motion detector so that they are on and off based on activity within the building. So that's also a nice thing too, because actually it kind of lends itself towards a little bit of a security measure. Because if there's a light on, you know, somebody's been within the building. So some of those windows will be live and some of them. Will be a blackout so that we can create this whole facade along the streetscape there. The other thing that I think is important as hinted earlier. The twenty-five foot setback from the property line allows for us to create this streetscape with landscaping and street trees. And sidewalk, which again just creates a whole nother sense of sense of place along that street. We've integrated multiple materials, shingles, clapboard, brick, stone. Again, they all help along with the earth tone colors to kind of break down the scale of this building. We've got some dormers up top on the third floor and actually some of those are live into the building. On the first perspective, you had a hint of our signage on the corner.
I'll I'll pull that up.
Okay.
Do you have that?
No, that's the full elevation sheet, not the rendering, Peter.
Okay.
There we go. So we've shown signage. Currently on that northeast corner facing Mount Hope Ave and then facing the drive coming in. Our sign currently is roughly ninety-seven square feet on each side. It's roughly twenty-nine feet long by three foot four in height, but that includes the sign panel, not just the letters. I know that, I believe we're allowed one sign of fifteen square feet, so obviously. We will need to apply for a variance for the signage.
Perry, just just to confirm, so this is the signage that is being proposed for the entire facility?
Correct. That's that's our only on-building signage dedicated towards. Retail or any kind of advertisement. We may have some signs in the back just as entry and, you know, clearance signs and things of that nature. But this is our our signage on the building in terms of. Building use. The the building itself, as mentioned earlier, is fully climate controlled. It's a state-of-the-art facility. It's fully sprinkled and will be equipped with fire alarm and full central station monitoring. Overall, I think the intent was for the elevation design to be sympathetic towards Bristol's. Architecture, but also creating a strong sense of place along Mount Hope Ave for the neighborhood. I will say, I've worked on numerous self-storage projects and this is probably by far one of the most upscale designs we've done. And I think that that actually speaks highly towards the town of Bristol. So I I really think this end result is something that fits well with the community. Just to cover a couple of quick items in terms of. The business aspect or the operation, the office hours. For the general office are nine AM to six PM, seven days a week. Customer access is from seven AM to nine PM. The loading and delivery area is also seven AM to nine PM. And that's with a code. All your doors, access points are key-coded for a customer who is a renter. Will get a key-coded card and the ability to access during operational hours. As I mentioned earlier, your vehicles for loading is an SU thirty box truck. No tractor trailers are on-site and I think. Traffic covered that for the most part. Unit storage is storage only. It's not offices, it's not. Used for trades, it's basically residential storage. The facility is covered throughout with security cameras. You've got basically security cameras throughout and keypads at entry points. So typically, the industry standard is three points of security, cameras, keypads and then individual locks on each of the units. Generally, there's one to two employees. At startup, when you may get a little bit more people coming in, you probably have two people on-site at at one time. But then generally, once it starts to rent out, it'll be it'll be one. Question was raised about in the beginning, large amount of people coming at one time. Generally, these facilities take. A little bit of time to sort of gain traction and, you know. I don't want to speak for here, but generally it's two to three years before they're fully leased up. So when you look at that spread over that time period, it actually shows how spread out the lease up is. And the amount of people that come are really staggered out sort of a good period of time. One other thing to cover, the question came up previously about daycare facility. We have not designed the daycare facade yet, but all intent is that the daycare. Design will be consistent with this and a complement to this. So scale and proportion wise, it'll probably have a little bit more sense of scale and proportion. It is daycare, it is kids. But again, I think it's along the same vernacular that we've created here. And that can be accomplished again also with. Use of architectural details and materials such as what we did here.
That's all the questions I have for Perry, if the board has any.
Hey, Peter, Steve, I just have one comment. At the TRC, we did talk about extending the side. At the TRC, we did talk about extending the sidewalk. So if you look at that picture right now, the
Yes, and and I should have pointed that out. That is, you'll see in the response that we provided Diane and Ed to the TRC comments, we did commit to extending the sidewalk to the east, to the edge of the property line. This this rendering predates the TRC meeting, so that's why it's not updated here. But the sidewalk will continue on the other side of that drive in front of the daycare facility.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. If there's no other questions for Perry, then I'm going to ask James Hamilton of DXD to speak.
Good evening.
Just I'm going to share again here, we can pull up. James, could you just explain your position with DXD and essentially what DXD does?
Yeah, so I am a vice president of development with DXD Capital. We're a New Mexico-based organization. We use our proprietary data and analytics to identify and source different development and acquisition opportunities solely for self-storage development across the company, or excuse me, across the country.
And how many how many sites do you currently operate?
Currently, including this site in Bristol, we have twelve sites under contract and three under construction.
And how long have you been in this business?
I've been in the self-storage industry for a little over five years now and have been directly involved in the development of over one point two million square feet of self-storage space.
Okay, and I I know many of us are familiar with self-storage facilities that we might have seen, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years ago, outdoor facilities. How does this sort of facility that's being proposed here differ from from that sort of an outdoor facility?
Yeah, so so all of the units and the loading for this particular facility will be contained to within the building. So it's not your traditional self-storage that people often think of with the the orange doors out on the highway with chain link fences and gravel parking lots. This will be, as Perry mentioned previously, state-of-the-art with a fully secure key-code access cameras and and all the the units located inside the building.
Okay, and can you just explain the number of units, what the sizes of the units will be?
Yes, we're proposing approximately seven hundred units. Those range anywhere from size five by five size, twenty-five square feet, to ten by thirty for three hundred square feet.
Okay, and and who's the typical tenant that you see for this facility?
A typical tenant will range anywhere from a college student who needs somewhere to keep their stuff for three to four months over summer break while they go home, to the law office who needs extra space just to store some important files, somewhere that's safe, secure, clean, to everywhere in between, empty nesters who are downsizing after their children move out of the house, to people who are in between moves, between apartments and houses.
And and Perry talked briefly about hours of operation. Can you just reiterate what the hours of operation for this facility would be?
Yeah, so the office hours for this facility would be nine AM to six PM, seven days a week. And then the access hours for individuals who are currently leasing a unit would be seven AM to nine PM.
So if I'm if I'm a current customer and I'm leasing a unit and I need to get something at at ten PM, can I get access to the building?
No, we'd have to wait until the morning.
And and in terms of loading and deliveries, that same thing, that same timeframe would apply?
Correct, for for deliveries from, you know, UPS or Amazon or e-commerce, that would be during office hours for deliveries for someone who needs to store their stuff or a business who needs to pick something up after hours, that would be until nine PM or as early as seven AM.
Okay, and Perry also talked on this. What's type and size of vehicles is this site designed for? And what sort of size of vehicle will will not be permitted onsite here?
So the maximum size vehicles that we design for is an SU thirty box truck, which is is most frequently a U-Haul truck, someone who's who's moving from out of state or or one town over would run a U-Haul truck for their apartment, bring it to the facility, store their items. We don't design, this is an intentional, we do not design for eighteen-wheelers or tractor trailers. Because generally, if you design for that type of vehicle, then they will come. And that's just not the particular customer that we're trying to attract.
Can you talk a little bit about restrictions on the use of the units and and what I and what can go inside of them?
Yeah, each each renter will sign a lease agreement, and that will prohibit any hazardous or combustible materials from being stored. We utilize the cameras and those are monitored, and what's recorded on the cameras are saved for a period of up to thirty days so that we are able to to track what's coming in and out of the building.
And in terms of use, this is storage only, I can't contractor, I can't use this as a tradesman unit, correct?
No, no, no commercial uses other than than storage.
And in terms of security, can you explain what the security system will be like for this for the property?
Right, it'll it'll be, like I said, cameras throughout the facility that'll track traffic coming off of DeWolf and off of Mount Hope Avenue, and also cameras at the office location and at all loading areas, and also cameras within the elevators themselves to track people going from floor to floor. And the elevators themselves will be protected with with keypads so that an individual running a unit on the first floor will not have access to the third floor, and an individual running a unit on the second floor won't have access to the to the third floor.
And I think Herman also mentioned that this is going to be fully fire code compliant and fully sprinkled.
Correct.
We talked a little bit earlier about parking and and not to belabor the point, but based on your experience with this type of a facility, in your opinion, is that the parking that's being proposed adequate to service the site?
Yes, it is.
There was also a question with regard to the daycare that's being proposed for the adjacent lot to the east. Can you just explain where that process is at this point?
Yes, as it relates to the daycare, we are not not in the daycare business. We're in the self-storage business, so we just didn't want to put the cart before the horse in in signing an agreement to relocate and rebuild a daycare. Should the project move forward, then we would move to to having a formal agreement and relocating and building that. It's it's fully our intention to deliver that. We we've made that commitment. It just has not been contractually signed yet, but that's that's solely due to, we we don't want to be delivering a daycare and not a self-storage facility, so.
Gotcha. And just one, a couple last final questions. There were some emails, actually, could you just explain what what sort of outreach you've done to the folks in the neighborhood?
Yes, in addition to the the notice requirements for the planning board, we also had a community meeting at the property last Wednesday, March second. We had about twenty to twenty-five individuals show up. It was a productive meeting. We did get to hear some concerns of the neighbors, one of which is is there's appears to be, in its current condition, a lot of cross-traffic from DeWolf Avenue to Mount Hope Avenue. That's not our intention, is once we we develop the facility for people to be cutting through. The driveway is not designed for that, the parking lot isn't designed for that. So we've heard those concerns and we're able to to provide a gate on that that rear entrance so that that doesn't occur.
And I know the as originally designed, there was no gate on DeWolf, and and my understanding that was to, you know, prevent cars from queuing up on DeWolf Avenue waiting to get in, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so so the gate that you're proposing would be a gate that would be closed on DeWolf after business hours are over?
That's correct.
And then it would be opened up again the next day?
Correct.
Also, I understand, are you doing anything with regard to screening and in particular with regard to the the direct-to-butter to the west?
Yes, we have. I think Glenn mentioned, we just haven't gotten into the the landscape design phase of the project yet, but we will be offering a landscape screen on that planned south border to the west, directly budding Mrs. Esposito, and we'll also add a fence along that property line.
Yeah, and she's requested a fence and you're willing to 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 put one there?
Correct.
That's all the questions that I have right now for Hamilton, if the board has any questions.
James, are you a trash? Are you proposing any kind of dumpster on the property?
For the self-storage use itself, we'll have a dedicated trash receptacle area within the loading area. The use itself doesn't attract a lot of rubbish or trash itself. If an individual does fail to pay and we have to clean their unit out, then we call in a private service to come do that for us. So there will be dedicated trash for the office itself, but within the loading area.
But not not like a dumpster that a truck would have to come and pick up?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Next.
All right, our last witness is Peter Scotty.
You shouldn't be paying to throw shit out the way. I don't really recall seeing it at others. Please mute yourself if you're not speaking, please, thank you.
All right, I'd like to have Peter Scotty, our real estate expert, testify.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I know that Mr. Scotty has has testified and been recognized as a real estate expert by this board on many other occasions. Just in order to save time, I'd ask that he be recognized as a real estate expert.
Right.
Thank you. Peter, you're familiar with this site, with the application and the proposed uses that go along with this project?
I am.
And you're also familiar with the standards for special use permits and dimensional variances under the Bristol zoning code?
I am.
And and have you taken a look at this project in terms of of its compliance with those standards for special use permit and variance?
Yes, sir.
And and could you please explain to the board your analysis and your findings in that regard?
Sure, could you bring up the area?
I will, if I can.
There we go, great. Okay, the subject parcel is a six point nine two acre irregularly shaped property with three hundred and one feet of frontage on Mount Hope Avenue and pardon me, four hundred and twenty-seven feet of frontage on Mount Hope Avenue, three hundred and thirty-two feet of frontage along DeWolf. As it is currently configured, it's kind of a hodgepodge of uses. There really are four main buildings, there's a restaurant, there's storage, there's boat storage, it's it really is kind of a an eyesore in what is predominantly residential usage when you come down from Medicom Avenue down Mount Hope Avenue and along to Wolf Avenue. The site is also impacted by a couple of pretty significant areas of wetlands kind of toward the toward the southerly and and eastery and westery sides of the site. As far as neighborhood uses, we're we're in a GB zone, so self-storage isn't allowed use by special use permit in the in the GB zone. Now, when you come down from Medicom Avenue on the north side of Mount Hope Avenue, up at the corner is that old gas station that's a repair facility, they sell tires, et cetera. Next to that is a single-family house, then we have Simpson Street, another single-family house, Woodbine Street. Then we have that forty-foot, forty-four-foot tall three-unit building at one eighty-nine Mount Hope, followed by a two-unit building, Milford Street, and then you have a three-unit, a three-unit, a single-family, a single-family, DeWolf Street, a two-unit and single-family going down on that north side. On the south side, up in the corner of Medicom, is a pretty good-sized vacant parcel of land belongs to Villander, I think. Then we have the subject property down to DeWolf. And when we come down to Wolf, DeWolf is a nicely-kept residential street. It's there are a few two and three-family, I think probably mostly two-family and single-family houses down to Wolf. What we have existing on the site right now is it's frankly an eyesore. It's a hodgepodge of uses, it's messy, it's it's not good. The developer has tried to design this self-storage facility, I've never seen one designed like this. It really looks like, it looks like a multi-unit kind of attached housing property, they've used setbacks, stepbacks. They've used different materials on the frontage. It's really, it's about the most attractive self-storage facility I've ever seen. It meets all the requirements as far as height, side yard, front yard, setbacks, lot coverage, et cetera. And frankly, it's a much less intense use than what we have there now. You've got the restaurant use, you've got daycare, you've got, it was a landscaping business, boat storage business. From what the traffic engineer has said, we're going to have a significantly less intensive traffic pattern for this kind of facility, people are not in and out of their self-storage facilities on a daily basis from my experience with them. I think frankly, that when you look at this overall project, this is about a hundred percent better than what is existing there now. So from the perspective of a special use permit, it meets the compatibility requirements with the surrounding area. I think it's going to be an improvement over what's there. They need, we need a little bit of relief, parking relief. But with the current plan for twenty-four onsite spaces, fourteen for the daycare, the balance for the self-storage facility plus two loading properties to diminish the the kind of sea of asphalt that's there. We're really protecting the wetland areas that are onsite now. It's it's pretty a pretty de minimis request as far as the the dimensional variance for parking. Finally, I think that when you look at the overall neighborhood and the compatibility issue with the fine design that's been created, I think we're going to have a really positive impact on the subject neighborhood.
Do you believe that this will have any be injurious to the neighborhood in any way or have a negative impact on property values?
No, they're they're limiting their hours, the pretty standard business hours. It's a hundred percent better than what's there, I think it's going to be a positive impact, that's true.
And with regard to the the requested variances, do you believe that those also meet the standards under the code?
Yes, I do.
All the questions I have for Mr. Scotty, the board has any questions?
Anybody else? Are you all done?
We're all done, we'd just like the opportunity to wrap up after the after the public speaks.
I'm sorry, I did drum, I was speaking, I I thought I was recognized. I do have a question for Mr. Scotty. Are you are you saying that commercial development? Are you, are you saying that commercial development does not have any impact on the valuation of residential property nearby?
No, I'm not saying that. What we're saying is that we're in a GB zone. Any impact that has been felt on the surrounding properties has been caused by the hodgepodge of uses that are on the site now. The proposed use is far more attractive, far less intensive, and will have a positive effect, if any, on surrounding property values.
Okay.
Steve?
Mr. Chairman, you ready to open up?
No, not yet. Not yet. I want to speak to Steve.
Okay.
Mr. Katz.
Go ahead.
Steve, you were the TRC meeting, right?
That's correct.
And what do you, how do you feel about this project?
I think overall, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think it would be an improvement for the neighborhood. I, I don't find it, or I should say, I do find it aesthetically pleasing. But I'm not in a butter. I don't live there. And, and I think we have a responsibility to listen to the residents and hear what they have to say. And, and if they're in favor of something like this, it's, it's, I, I think if I lived across the street, I personally would find it to be appealing, given what's currently there. But that's my own opinion, and I don't live across the street. So I would love to hear what, what all of the butters have to say about it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, Mr. Mergo.
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Well, here's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I will ask, I will ask that people raise their hands and I will call them. Please keep yourself muted until I call on you. And for those, for those folks on the phone, it is star six to unmute yourself when you're invited to speak, and it is star nine to raise your hand. And I'm just going to go down the list of folks who have hands raised, and the first one I see is Alan. Go ahead, Alan, and please state your name and your address for the record, and you have to unmute yourself.
You don't want to talk?
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Yes, hi. So you say you want to put storage units inside?
Excuse me, Alan?
Yes.
Before you start, can you just give us your full name and your address for the record?
Okay, my name is Alan Dias. I live at 24 Sampson Street.
Thank you.
Wizard.
Yes. I was wondering about the storage units. It's going to be three stories high. And I really don't know if that would be good for the neighborhood or the traffic that we might have for the storage and the turnaround that I have on my yard. So what do you say about the three-story unit and a turnaround?
So this is, this is a public testimony. I think the developers will answer and respond once all the testimony is concluded.
Okay, okay, that, I guess that we all put down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next hand raised is Cassandra Dias.
Hi, my name is Cassandra Dias. I, I am Alan's daughter, but I've been, I have some concerns of my own. I live on 24 Sampson Street, which you guys, if you don't know, Sampson Street is actually between Woodbine and Medicom. So we are on that little tiny dead-end road that really gets no, it's really not noticeable. So we see the most of the traffic and the buildup and the issues. So my question was for the person that was from Beta who did the traffic review, which is first and foremost, hearing that they think Medicom to Mount Hope Ave is not, you know, any, have any traffic issues or only two crashes per year. Maybe we only have two crashes a year, but the potential for so many crashes has happened. And I mean, a lot of us are used to this intersection, but it is very hazardous. As somebody was mentioning, coming out onto, off of Mount Hope Ave, turning left can take up to 10 minutes, and there is no stopping, especially during, you know, five o'clock traffic. Actually, sorry, between two and five, because that's really Bristol traffic times. And imagining people coming in with their U-Hauls, coming up Mount Hope Ave, trying to get onto Medicom, sounds like a nightmare and very hazardous. Especially because people who drive U-Hauls don't have to have truckers licenses. So they're just general folk like you and me trying to drive a large truck up a hill onto a main road. If, and you guys mentioned it's going to be 700 units. And I realize that traffic is going to be easy and slow because it's a storage unit, but nonetheless, we will be expecting a lot more people in our neighborhood. And no matter what the proposed plot is, we need a light at the top of the street. It's very hazardous, especially if we want people to be coming up and down Medicom. And like you guys mentioned, with the tire, the tire car repair place on the corner, they're always parking up and down the entire corner. So my first question is about the traffic and what you, the locals have to say about this.
So as I said when Alan spoke, I don't, we're not going to be answering questions back and forth. I think the developer is going to respond at the end of this public testimony.
Okay, that's fine. I just, that is my main concern here, and so thank you for listening.
Thank you, Cassandra. And the next hand raised is Chris Sylvia.
Yep. Hello, my name's Chris Sylvia. I live at 55 DeWolf Ave, just down from the, from the project site. I have to say, I came in with some reservations on this, but I thought your presentation was pretty, really good, and I liked the look of it. I guess my biggest question is, as someone who's lived here for a little while, and we've had some issues with box trucks coming down to Wolf, is if vehicles exit of your facility and they were to take a left onto DeWolf and down, heading south on Wolf, would you put any kind of signage that would direct them back out to Mount Hope and deter them from coming down? Because we've had issues as far as just, you know, cars parked on the street and kind of bottlenecking the road. But also, as somebody who had, you know, my cable lines pulled off my house by a moving truck, I would hate to see a lot of box trucks coming down our road and that becoming an issue. I was just wondering if there was any plan of doing that and keeping the traffic from running through or heading into the residential neighborhood and not really knowing where they're going.
I can, Diane, I can address that. I mean, I don't think it's our intent that people are going to be coming out and going left onto DeWolf. And if the board wants us to have it right turn only there, then that would be, that would be fine.
Okay.
We could appropriate signage there for that, if that's the board's wish.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Is that all? I'm sorry, is that it?
Jimmy, Jimmy Viera's got his hands up, but it's, it's on a light, so you can't see it.
Yes, I see Jim, and then there's another one behind Jim. So Jim, Viera, you're up next.
Hi, I'm, my name is Jim Viera. I reside at 181 Mount Hope, directly across the street. While I'll say the building aesthetically pleasing, I feel that this neighborhood is way too congested to be putting something like that here. I, you know, I sent a couple of letters to the planning board with my concerns. And I do have some more questions that tonight's meeting for the developers. They said there was a traffic analysis done. You know, I walk around the neighborhood quite a bit, take my dog for a walk. I don't recall, the only thing I recall close to a traffic analysis was a silver box with a, some type of sensor onto the street. I'm assuming that was it. But the only, the only thing, it didn't go right across the street. It only took the eastbound traffic, and it's quite a bit of traffic coming westbound as well as eastbound. When we attended the butters' meeting last week, we were told those trades do use this. Matter of fact, specifically plumbers. So, you know, I don't know if things change or whatever. Another thing, zoning change. I would talk to a friend of mine who was a housing appraiser. And I was told, once you change the zoning on, to allow this in here, our home values will go down. And I'm getting close to retirement, and you know, I'm 65, so in 10 years, if I no, can, can no longer maintain my property, I want to sell it for a good market value, like anybody else would. And I don't think that somebody's going to want this, you know, in front of this storage facility. You know, all my other remarks, I said, I sent to the board, and I just stand by those, and I'll continue. I want to go on record as being opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. The next hand raised is Teresa Capello.
Please.
Hi, yes. I was at the neighborhood meeting on the second as well. I reside at 62 DeWolf Avenue. And I just had some follow-up questions from that meeting that we didn't really talk about tonight. And one of those was a concern about any soil testing, if that has been done before everything starts to get disturbed regarding any contaminants. Another clarification that I had was on the March 2nd meeting. It said that operation areas would begin at 6:00 AM, and tonight it did mention 7:00 AM, so, you know, maybe that was changed. I just kind of wanted to clarify that. And I think the other thing that had come up was someone else had raised at the March 2nd meeting was about the concern of the signage and that it really doesn't fit aesthetically with the residential look that they're trying to do in the neighborhood with it being on the building. And someone had suggested that maybe it would be ground signage similar to what was at the DPW. And finally, another question was regarding if there would need to be any blasting required and just about the construction time regulations.
Thank you, Teresa. And the next hand raised is Cynthia Esposito.
Hi. My name is Cynthia Esposito. I live at 186 Mount Hope Ave. I'm the major butter. Okay, these are my concerns. Basically, thank you very much. We did discuss having a fence around my property. I'm very happy that you decided to go with that. I want a 10-foot fence. I want a 10-foot fence.
I'm, I'm sorry, Cynthia.
Beginning of my chain link fence.
Is, is anybody having problems hearing Cynthia? I can't.
Yes.
Around my property line.
One second. I think we're having a little difficulty hearing you.
Right now is my biggest concern. There is also another concern. Four corners, Mount Hope Ave. Yeah.
Cynthia was having difficulty with her computer access, so we're going to.
Unmuted. Yeah, unmuted. Oh, okay, that's fine. Now, come in here. Okay, am I, am I able to speak now?
Yes, can you all hear Cynthia?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Loud and clear.
Okay, hi, everybody. Okay, I want to thank you again for acknowledging that I need a fence. My request is for a 10-foot fence. I want it to start at my chain link fence all around my property line to the DeWolf Avenue exit entrance. I want.
Cynthia, what is your address?
186 Mount Hope Avenue.
Okay, you're right next door, okay.
I'm the major of butter.
Okay, thank you.
Also, the intersection between Mount Hope Ave and DeWolf. I think that that should have some kind of signage, basically a four-way stop sign. And also, I am visually disabled. The traffic coming around, it's been numerous times I've tried to cross the street, and I've almost gotten hit. Okay, with all this increased traffic, which you're saying is not going to be, there is going to be increased traffic. Okay, people are going to be coming around, not knowing where they're going and everything, and I'm not, I don't feel that safe unless there's proper signage. So that is definitely what I am requesting. I really appreciate the locked gate entrance way on DeWolf. That is also a safety issue for us. I would also like continued maintenance on the fence, which has to be inspected by the project manager for life, by the owners. I also would like my house power washed and my windows cleaned, since there's going to be a large amount of dust and debris from all this tearing up of asphalt. And since I've just had windows put in and my house recided, I require that to be finished. I also would like any future concerns to be taken into consideration if this project passes. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia. And we have one other hand raised. Lisa and Paul Miranda.
Hello, my name is Paul Miranda. I live at 8 Heritage Road. My property adjacent to the east-south corner with a dog leg of the property is, so I am as probably have the most into this thing because I have probably the most valued house that touches this property. So as it looks, I do like the look of the building. I've been in the, I've been in the trade for over 40 years. That is the nicest-looking storage building I have ever seen in my life. I, my concerns are on the back where it's wetlands of the property is, are they going to let it go back to natural and let nature take its place?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's going to just let it, let's grow right in.
Ms. Small can confirm that, but that is what DEM would require us to do. We're going to restore the buffer, remove the buildings that are in that buffer right now, and.
Okay. Mr. Regan, I hate to interrupt you, but I just, we required everybody else to finish their testimony, and then we'll give you a spot, chance to respond to everything at once.
Thank you, sorry.
I'm sorry about that. I, I was kind of thought I was going to be able to talk that way. That was, that's my concern. I think that the place is a complete mess, and it's been a complete mess for a long time. And I can see it from my backyard. And I can see it from my backyard, all the junk, all the, the, the crappy boats and all that stuff. I think. I know nobody wants this in their, in their backyard. But what is our alternative if somebody else is gonna go there? It's definitely gonna be quieter than a restaurant, it's gonna be less traffic than a restaurant. And daycare center being in there and boat people, I think there'd be definitely less traffic. The prob, the thing is, I um, I just think it. It's just so hard to swallow and I understand Jimmy lives right across the street, uh and Jimmy's my friend, I know him, I understand how he feels, but. Um what's the other proposals that have been for this property? That's what I like to know, um I mean, so that everybody knows. They can pick, you know, they could say, well, this is probably the less of all evils. And that, and that's all I have, have to say.
Thank you. There is another hand raised, Cassandra Diaz is back, Diaz is back, um we do have another resident who would like to speak. Cassandra, since you're already gone, can I let this other resident go and then I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with you?
Of course.
Okay. Yes, just get your name and your address for the.
I'm Kathy Franco, one seventy-seven Mount Hope, I reside on the corner of Mount Hope and Dewolf. They're talking about fourteen parking spaces for the daycare and ten for the storage. And then I'm hearing. That it's gonna start off really slow and then get busy. Where's the other parking places gonna come when this storage place starts getting real busy? That's one question. And then I just heard a gentleman say on the Dewolf Avenue side. That he wants a sign that says no left turns. Well, I don't want the sign that says no right to turn right. Because I'm on that corner and already I can't park in front of my house. Because the trucks come through Dewolf, you're gonna get trucks on every kind of public road. Trucks come through, you can't park in front of my house because you're, I will get you. Those are my concerns, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um Cassandra, you have the next hand raised.
Thank you, sorry for coming back, um I just wanted to. Kind of follow up on what um Paul was saying, which was um what are our other alternatives? Because I have to agree, it is a gorgeous building. Um but let's not forget, it's a storage unit and I don't see that benefiting our community. Um I uh would love to know what else is, is available, I know that when the property went for sale. It was said that this property would be good for a storage unit and it was encouraged in the. Um in the ad, and I feel like that was really kind of limiting um what we could do with that space for the community.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
There are no other hands raised, I'll just. The participants, no other hands raised. Oh wait, we have another, oh this is um Lisa and Paul Miranda again.
Hi, this is Lisa Miranda of eight Heritage Road. So how I see where some of this could actually benefit is that we don't have the taxing of the sewer. Um system being taxed by having a restaurant and, you know, flushing of toilets. And all the watering and stuff like that for the kitchen. Also, it would help with all the wetlands that are, that's the currently there that has. Storage around it that's unhealthy for the wetlands, that's the only thing that I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jim Viera is, has raised his hand again.
I I just want to uh reiterate what Kathy Franco said about traffic on here. Uh there've been many times I parked my vehicle out in front of my house. And the amount of traffic that I I almost getting out of my vehicle, it's very, very tight. Down, down the street, especially up in this area, Mount Hope Avenue does widen down towards the public works. But it does get very tight where we are and you know. Again, the traffic is too there, sometimes it's like a, if you're gonna see Conch Speedway, that people pass on through there so quickly. But I just wanna uh back Kathy up on that, what she said. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like Cynthia has raised her hand again also. Was there something else? Okay, and I I know the chairman usually. Wants to make sure that people are saying something new and not repeating, so.
Yes, no, no, I'm gonna say something new. I would like to be involved with the design of the fence.
Are we all done? Could we close the uh?
Um you, Lisa and Paul Miranda have raised their hands again.
Yeah, and Jimmy's concern and Kathy's concern, is it possible to widen the road of? In that area? That's, you know, that would help with their concerns.
What road do you want wide?
Mount Hope.
Just up in that area.
That's, that, that's what the, that's the town of Bristol. And uh it has nothing to do with this contract.
I'm just, I'm asking a simple question, is it possible?
And I answered a simple question.
Okay, then that's fine, no, no need to get mad about it.
No, I'm not, you know, it's use of respect them. With what people do and what contractors do. And where you get the money, would you like, the the young lady wants it a four, a four sign. Four-way stop sign, that's nothing to do with this project. That's the town of Bristol, she wants to have one, tell her to go to the police station. And ask for one, and that's the only thing.
With respect, I just want to mention that your rendering does show that Mount Hope has a. Yellow line down the middle and two false sides of the street, which it currently does not.
That was Cassandra Diaz again, thank you Cassandra. Uh and and I think, I think I need to um jump in here for the board's edification on the traffic. Study. The traffic impact study prepared by Beta was um. Very recently received following the technical review committee meeting, it typically is not required until preliminary. Um they did submit it uh with the master plan, but it was not provided with sufficient time for the peer review. Um the peer review engineer reviewed appendix C regarding the parking requirements. But the actual traffic impact study or impact assessment was not, um the review was not completed yet with the peer en- engineer. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that because traffic was a major um conversation tonight. So that would have to be reviewed by the peer engineer.
Chairman. Is it time for motion to close the public hearing then?
Yes.
And then.
No, stop, stop. No, you can stop hearing from, you've heard from members of the public at least two or three times with many. But you want to give the applicant a chance to respond, which has to be done while the public hearing is open.
Okay.
So don't close the public hearing yet.
Okay, I resent that motion.
Um so i- if I might, um just cause to try to move things along here, because I know you've got a full agenda tonight. Um so many of these um questions dealt with traffic. Is there gonna be an increase, is there not gonna be an increase? Uh what I'd like to do is just have Mr. Peralta. Just address a couple of these uh questions and and. It it based on the the traffic study that you did and 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 just can you confirm that it was not just traffic going in one direction, was traffic going in both directions, correct?
Correct, yeah, just to um, just to re- reiterate what I discussed earlier regarding the traffic safety assessment, it wasn't as simple as, you know, putting a counter on. Um Mount Hope Avenue, um it's, you know, doing inventory of the physical roadway characteristics, the servicing roadways. Collecting traffic data, again, including that count um count on Mount Hope Avenue, we actually sat out there. At the intersection of Mount Hope and Medicom encountered that during the peak periods. Uh we measured stopping site distances at the study intersections. And did um of existing and future conditions analysis, um operation analysis at the study intersections. So it's, it's more than this, uh it's more than just um uh traffic council along Mount Hope Avenue.
Okay, and and in terms of the traffic generated by this site. Will this site be producing more traffic or less traffic than the restaurant facility that's there now?
Uh it's definitely um much less and um any other use for this um commercial property. It's highly likely that it's gonna generate more traffic than what's being proposed now.
And there were some questions about um traffic up at the corner of of Medicom and uh. And Mount Hope. Um uh are there sufficient sightlines on on Mount Hope? Uh in terms of this project and and the traffic entering and and exiting this site?
Yes, there is sufficient um site, site distances at the intersection, again, Mr. Morgo had mentioned that um he's um. Observe cars park um at that corner of that um intersection. And that's something that um you know, that maybe the town can control or cannot, um you know, I cannot, I cannot um really um. Assess that, but in relation to the traffic operations there, I mean, the self-storage is at the peak hour during the day. Is generating less than fifteen trips, you're looking at about, you know, seven vehicles entering, again, seven vehicles exiting. And it's gonna have negligible effect on traffic along Mount Hope Avenue. And specifically at the intersection of Mount Hope Avenue and Medicom Avenue.
Uh thank you, um um just a couple of quick questions for Lynn Small, um based on the questions that were asked by Teresa Capello. Um Lynn, um there was a question about whether there would be soil testing. Here and whether there would be any blasting required on this site.
Um I believe actually, and James might be able to provide the results of it, that there was an environmental site assessment that was done and the site is clean. Um.
Uh just, just to make, you said the site is clean based on that assessment?
I believe so and James.
Close this down, I'll come back.
Um James has that um report and would be able to testify to that, I haven't, I didn't read through the whole thing. Um but we did do um class four soil evaluations for the site. To um confirm that we would be able to properly design the drainage system even at this. Um master plan level, we just wanted to be sure, um and we did not encounter any ledge conditions. Um they may do some borings on the site. Prior to construction of the building for the structural designs, just to confirm, but as of yet, there is no ledge that we've encountered on this property.
So, so therefore there would, you don't anticipate any need to do any blasting here?
Correct.
Okay, and um just with regard to the wetlands, the questions about that. You, we're gonna restore the wetland buffer and then the wetland will be allowed to re-vegetate in its natural state, is that correct?
Yeah, basically what will happen at the very least is we will. Remove, demolish and remove all of the existing materials within that perimeter wetland. Um and we will seed it and let it grow naturally. It is possible that during the review, the DEM asks us to put a few plantings in there as part of the um. Project, but we will work with the state um on that process and make sure that the wetland is properly treated.
And I just have a couple of quick questions for uh James Hamilton. Uh James, uh there was a question about trades. And ju- just to confirm, a a a plumber or carpenter could. Rent a space, but they can only use that space for storage, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, Peter, they could rent the space to keep their materials after hours, but they could not use the space for commercial purposes. I E showing people in the space, conducting business out of the space, it would be used strictly for storage of their materials.
They can't mill material in the space, pound nails in there, do any of that?
That, that's correct.
Um also, with regard to uh Ms. Esposito, who is the, the butter on two sides. You, you mentioned that you're willing to uh install a fence, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you would, obviously, if you're installing a fence, uh you'd, you'd be maintaining that, is that correct?
That's correct.
And and your understanding is that the, the tallest fence that can um. Uh that Bristol allows right now without a, any kind of variance is six feet?
Yes.
Okay, so you're willing to put a six-foot fence in and because a ten-foot fence would require variance?
Yes.
And then you're willing to obviously try to work with her in terms of screening and any other that she might need, correct?
That's correct.
I don't know if the board has any quest, further questions for our witnesses as a result of this, just, just to sum up and and once again, I appreciate the time that you've. Uh provided to us tonight, and I know that this is a uh. This is an important project to the, the folks that live in this neighborhood. You know, uh Peter Scotty called this site a bit of a hodgepodge, uh I think uh. Um one of the other neighbors, uh Mr. Miranda called it a bit of a mess and I, I think I agree with him a little bit more. Because frankly, the site is a bit of a mess, it's a jumble of uses, unattractive buildings, non-conforming buildings. And and substandard environmental conditions, uh we have an opportunity here. And and I know changes is, is um difficult and and people get anxious and rightfully anxious and fearful when something is going on. Uh close to their home, but we've got an opportunity to redevelop this site in a way that would reduce traffic. Reduce the intensity of the use, bring this property into compliance with zoning. Uh restore the wetlands, bring it up to current DEM standards, improve drainage, provide water quality treatment. Uh and on top of that. You know, provide a new daycare facility, which would be a benefit to the neighborhood. Um uh and, you know, quite frankly, as, as one of the neighbors mentioned, this is. I I've never seen a, a storage facility quite like this, I haven't seen many, you know, frankly, residential facilities that have this quality of design. Uh and I think this is, would certainly be the nicest looking facility this type in, in the state, if not in the country. Um so I, I think there will be, as Peter Scotty said, in, in a positive impact on property values. Because what is there across the street now cannot be helping property values and and quite frankly, the. The uncertainty of whether the restaurant's gonna reopen, the bar's gonna reopen or something else with more intense use is gonna go in there. Is not helpful to someone who's trying to maximize the value of their property. Um also, just wanted to mention something else about parking, because I know, you know, parking is a concern, we're trying to provide what's necessary. Based on all the data that we have, while not increasing the amount of the pavement here and 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 causing further problem for the wetlands and the drainage. But one of the things that we will propose, uh and we'll be proposing this to the zoning board. As a condition of any parking variance is that. And and Ms. Small said, we have space available to provide additional overflow parking, uh if necessary. And and you have a provision in your zoning code that applies to, not to us, but applies to um. Manufacturing industrial uses, which says that, you know, you can provide the parking that's required and if the town down the road deems that you. Need to do additional parking, then, and you've got the space to do it, then additional parking would be added, so we would agree to a condition on any parking variance. That if the town down the road deems it necessary for us to add that additional parking, we would provide a further. Purvous parking area for that additional overflow parking, so there is a safety valve here. There, there is, it's not our intent to cause an issue in the neighborhood, to cause a problems, our intent to. And frankly, improve the neighborhood and improve the property uh for everyone's benefit. Uh so that is a condition that we would be happy to, to append to any uh variance as it comes to the parking. Um so that, once again, the, if, if it turns out that. We, we think we're right, but if it turns out we're wrong, we have the ability to add some additional spaces and and solve any issue there. Um so that's essentially what we have, happy to answer any of the questions that the board has. Uh any concerns that you might have with regard to what's being proposed. Um said this did get a positive recommendation from the TRC, uh but we're obviously very interested in, in your feedback and and. How you feel about this.
And um before you close the public hearings, Cynthia Esposito has raised her hand again.
Thank you, I, I want it noted that I do want a special variance, I don't want a six-foot fence, I want a ten-foot fence. If I don't get a, a six uh variant, special variance, I'm reserving my right to appeal based on the evidence presented. Does not keep me safe. Does not keep me safe.
Thank you. Thank you Cynthia.
We're all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Close the uh.
Andy, can we close the public hearing now?
Yep, you can make a motion to close the public informational meeting.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Hall of Fame.
Hi.
I'm sorry. Diane, you're gonna call a roll call?
Yes, please.
Armin, Filati.
Aye.
Steven Katz.
Aye.
Chuck Millard.
Aye.
Tony Margo.
Aye.
Jerome Scutrito.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, what's the pleasure of the board?
Um, Mr. Chairman, may I? This is Andy Tights, I, I would just recommend, whatever you do, I, I think you should discuss it and. Um, we should get the feelings of the board, but um. Given all the two hours of evidence and materials presented today, I would suggest whatever you do in the end, you direct staff. To prepare a written decision, um, cause we don't have a draft decision ready to go tonight. So I would recommend that that be your final conclusion, directing us to prepare a draft as decision for the next meeting.
Fine.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
So, Mr. Chairman, I have one comment, um, and. I, I like the project, I, I listened to what all the folks have said. Um, I would say this is something that you know. Would be put in front of your homes or alongside of your homes, you don't know what could go there if this doesn't happen. Um, so it, it's what you know, um, and again, you live there, I don't live there, but. Um, insofar as the motion goes for this. Uh, I would like to see a condition added since they, uh, since the developer does not have a contractual relationship. With the daycare center, um, and they indicated that they wouldn't establish one until after. We move forward with this project, I just wanna have that as a condition that we would agree to move this forward. On the condition that they also do the daycare center.
You agenda formal motion?
That's, that's, yeah.
Oh, I got a question there, I mean, what if the daycare just decides they don't wanna do it anymore, I mean, we can't hold them to go out and find another daycare, correct?
Right.
Yep, that's, that's fair enough.
Okay, you know what I mean, so we're making a condition that they have a daycare there, that would probably be.
Yeah, nope. Brian, that's, that's a, that's a fair point, it was my understanding going back from the T R C that, that they had. Had those conversations and, and the daycare. On board with that.
Daycare's been there a very long time, you know, so I think it'll probably, hopefully they can come to terms of some sort.
Yep.
May I make a suggestion?
Andy, please.
May I suggest that it be a condition of preliminary approval? That they come forward with a definite proposal for the use of that other building. If they can't have a daycare, then they, that whatever tenant they're gonna have there, they should come forward with a lease and a definite proposal. For that building, and I think that's important for your jurisdiction as well, because the traffic use can be very dependent on the use. And um, their whole traffic thing is based on this dichotomy between the hours of the daycare. Versus a self-storage, so they either, we can't make them come with the daycare. But we can make them come and tell us exactly what's gonna be in that second building.
I agree.
So if they can't get the daycare, they need something else compatible.
Yeah, I like that, I, yes.
That's agreeable.
Can we add seeing some renderings to the uh, the daycare building for the next meeting?
Certainly.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, um, if I may, I um. I listened to all the testimony tonight, I listened to the butters, more importantly, um. I lived on Heritage Road for a dozen years, so I used to live right around the corner from this, actually right where. Across the street from Paul Miranda. So I understand the dynamic and the traffic flows on DeWolf. And I understand the stop sign in the intersection at Mount Hope and Medicom, which is a challenge. Um, so. I like the plan, I think it's a good use, I know that some of the neighbors are apprehensive. Um, I think that if they understand that the general business zone is. Probably the most broadly interpreted zone in the town, and a lot of things can fall under that. That for a quiet neighborhood and is although Mount Hope is congested up, up top, it is still a quiet neighborhood, that this use will. Continue it to be a quiet neighborhood. Um. As far as traffic controls and stop signs, uh, uh, as you said, I know that's part of the town, um, I would. I would advise the developer to really. Come to terms with the neighbors and the direct the butters.
Oh my god.
And uh, make sure they're part of this all the way through, I think they have so far, but I think they, they continue with that. And uh, those are my um, my thoughts on this.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I have a question for Mr. Reagan. Um, what percentage of the property is wetlands and uh, undeveloped?
Um, Lynn, do you have that information?
I'm just quickly looking at my plan, I'm not sure if I have that on here.
Thank you. It would be fair to say that if, if this project is approved. Uh, we're not in a position to develop anything else, is that correct Lynn, based with, on the wetland buffers?
Yeah, I mean, would it be safe to say that fifty percent, forty percent is?
I think it's closer to thirty percent, honestly, the site is nearly seven acres. Um, and we're really limiting the development to about a third of the property. Um, the back portion, the very far back is dry land, but. We're not gonna be putting anything there, and then that center strip is about one third, and that's all wetlands, so I would say kind of breaking the site into three.
Dry land is inaccessible.
There's like a small upland area between the two well and areas, um, I think that's how they got back there to put the solar panels in, but this. Um, owner is not intended or is not intending on doing anything back there at all.
Would the developer be willing to uh, abandon that access and make the whole place under, undevelopable?
You would have to ask the developer that question.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm not, I think, I think the building is probably, it's, 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 it's not bad, it's gonna be there. But I'm really excited to get fifty or sixty percent of that piece of property into undeveloped wetlands, I think. The entire neighborhood would, would benefit from that.
So the. So the intention would be for the, the balance of the property to be de-restricted and not be developed?
Right. See, it's basically inaccessible anyway, my, my understanding, right?
Uh, yes, uh, currently situated, yeah, that's something we could look at, Peter.
Yep. Yes.
What, what are we saying here?
I'm sorry, uh, yeah, I think uh, James, is that you'd be in agreement with that?
Uh, yeah, I, I believe so, I.
Yeah, I mean, we, we would wanna have the ability, as I said, if, if, if the town at some point down the road decided we needed to have a little bit more parking, to have the ability to add that. Um, but a- as Lynn said, we've got wetlands and then, you know, uh, the, the, the non let, wetland areas there are sort of interspersed. Um, and somewhat cut off by the wetland in the middle of the property, so.
That's what I'm talking about, I'm not, I'm not trying to take any sort of spot parking spaces that are close to the building, I'm just talking about the entire. Back area of the property, where, where you wouldn't be putting, I can't imagine be putting something back there anyway, over there the old. Uh, Mount Hope.
No, no, nothing that I could, I could consider contemplate right now, no.
No.
Good.
Did I be agreeable?
I mean, that makes, that, you know, that certainly makes me uh, um, a yes on the project. I said, Mr. Chairman, I have anything else?
All right, what else? We, have we got a motion on this?
You do not.
I think what you're looking for is a motion to direct staff to. Prepare a draft decision to approve um, along the lines of your discussion with the conditions that have been discussed.
Right.
You can say so moved if you want.
So moved on that, Andy.
Uh, one, one question for Mr. Tights, so A- Andy's, is the suggestion that they would prepare a decision? And then they would vote on that decision at the next meeting as opposed to taking a, a vote on the approval tonight?
That is correct, obviously you want a decision that has findings of fact and so forth, and. And we don't have any of that now, and we've discussed, we've discussed a lot of these conditions without specific language. So we would have that all prepared in advance of the next meeting.
I just wanted to clarify.
Nothing's easy.
So Tony made the motion.
Yes, I did.
I, I'll second that m- emotion with those condi- the, the conditions that we stated.
Diane, the roll call.
Um, so this would be a roll call vote. Armin Filati. Steven Katz.
With conflict, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Chuck Millard.
Aye.
Tony Margo.
Aye.
Jerome Scutrito.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Presentation, thank you.
Have a good night.
Very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Jam- Chairman, next item on the agenda is Bristol Yon Mill.
I, can I ask a question, did Steve Katz vote on this?
I did.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, I did.
I think the two of you were talking at the same time, Stephen Arman, that's why you might not have heard it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Bristol Yon Mill, also known as Robin Rug. Major land development, continuation of the public informational meeting and possible action by the board. On the master plan review of the major land development for the redevelopment of the Robin Rug. Mill to be known as Bristol Yon Mill located at one twenty-five Thane Street. Proposal is for one hundred and fifty-one residential. Units. All apartment units and approximately sixty-three hundred square feet of commercial space in the mill building. Proposal includes parking on the east side of Thane Street that is located approximately in one hundred thirty feet. South of the intersection of Church and Thane Street, planning board also to make recommendation. To the town council on the proposed change of zone, request to amend the original zone, change conditions on the mill property. And to change the zone on the parking lot properties to a waterfront planned unit, the, but, unit development. Properly is, property is currently zoned waterfront planned unit development with conditions. Waterfront and downtown zones, and is also within the Bristol Historic District. Lot ten lots forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-nine, fifty. Sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-eight, seventy-one, seventy-three, seventy-four, and seventy-six. Owner is Russ Russ Realty in Carrion Realty Company, applicant Brady Sullivan Properties LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be stepping down, refusing this, sell for this project.
Okay, this.
Al- also, I think we're under a time constraint uh, with this project. Uh, in terms of making a decision, I just, before you reopen that public meeting, I just need a minute. If that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we just take a three minute recess?
Why, sure.
Thank you, give us all a chance to stretch. And Mr. Millard, I just remind you to uh, turn off your camera, since you're accused.
I'm trying to figure out how to do that, unfortunately, I'm a computer illiterate, and I don't know how to get out of this thing.
Uh, actually, I think I could do it for you.
Now, Andy, if I wanna, okay, that's great, if I wanna speak as a public citizen at some point, how do I do that?
Um, I, I think we had discussed that as far as requesting. Um, an opinion and advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission.
Right, I did, I did uh, uh, go on the website and I spoke to them. And it says quite clearly that you can, you, you can step down, but you don't give up your right to speak as a private citizen. That's right in the regulations.
That, that. Uh, that's fine, I can't tell you what to do on that. So if, if you're gonna be speaking as a private citizen, then it'd be just like everyone else, raising your hand when the time comes. And turning your camera back on when called on.
No, you, you'll turn my camera back on for me, I presume, so I don't know how to.
Yes, yes, we can turn it back on.
How do you, how do you raise your hand, I don't mean to be a pain in the ass there, but.
There, there should be some buttons down on the bottom. There should be something you see a little, looks like a handle, says raise hand, are you, are you on a computer or are you on an iPad?
I'm on a computer.
Should be down on the bottom, if you move your mouse around along the bottom. And hover it around, there should be, that's where the. And that's actually where you should be able to turn your camera back on.
Yes, I, thank you, Andy, because I don't think I can actually turn your camera on, Chuck, you, you'll need to do that when.
No, I, I, I think you can, Diane, I turned them off and I can, let me, let me test it, but I think I can turn them back on now. Um, oh no, okay, I could ask to start video.
Yeah, so you can ask Chuck to turn his video on, but you can't actually turn it on for him.
Okay, all right, I guess that's, I guess that's a good safety feature, if people aren't dressed or whatnot, or. Not turning one's camera on without warning them.
I'm fully dressed, but I'm gonna give myself a glass of wine.
All right, well, we want to just ta- test your camera while you're here, though, just turn it on, if you found it, can you wanna try turning it on and off, just while we're. Finishing up our recess here?
It should be right on the bottom, it says stop video, you wanna start, you wanna hit the button, the little app arrow next to the stop video.
Yeah, I see it, there you go.
There you are, yeah.
Now we see that, now we see you.
Awesome.
All right. And, and why we're doing. Now, we're, while we're doing stuff here, we'll, we're, we're gonna be uh, with our alternate, Richard Righiro. If he's um.
I'm sorry, Andy, but I believe Brian Clark is the first.
Brian Clark is.
Oh, okay, Brian's the first alternate, right?
Brian Clark will participate in lieu of um, Chuck Millard, thank you.
Okay, and Richard is unmuted at the moment, but could be remuted and however you wanna do it, okay?
Okay, thank you, so I think that's it, right?
Right, and Brian, can you turn your camera on, please, too?
I'll be right there.
Right, I think.
We ready?
Yeah, whenever.
Let's get the show on the road.
So, Mr. McCoy, I think you're up.
Hey, doing Diane, um, I'd like to, Chris Reynolds from Brady Sullivan Properties. Um, first off, I'd like to apologize for last meeting, um. I was planning on attending, actually came down with COVID and actually thought I was gonna be able to even attend uh, up to that day, but it really did actually. Hit me surprisingly hard, so um. Apologize for that, obviously I've been presenting throughout in the uh, the pre-apps as well as the tours of. Toraster and as well as Robin Rug, and so um. I was able to, with the help of Diane, watch the video of the testimony and presentation, um. I tried to talk to my screen a couple of times to answer some questions and, um, but I was able to. Get the comments from the board and the public, and we have now resubmitted a plan that's in front of you. Um, which hopefully addresses, um, some or not all of your comments. Um, we've heard your concerns and then hopefully this um, thoughtful resubmission addresses a lot of those. Uh, what I'd like to do, Diane, if I could, is just um. Kinda hit on all the big items that was uh, brought up last time and how we resubmitted um, the additional information. And then we can kinda go from there, but I like to try to answer everything that was hopefully brought up last time and what we've done. Am I able to share my screen?
Yes, I was just gonna say, let me know if you need me to um, give you permissions, there you go.
Yep, all right, you can see this?
Yes.
Okay. So we, as part of your package, reduced some renderings of the site. As I've mentioned in the past, at least, we don't plan to change any of the facade because it is a historical building. Obviously, when you put those big new black windows in, it makes a dramatic effect. I think a lot of people saw that in Torrister. When that, when we started putting windows in there, just it creates a whole different look and newness to the building of the historic building. The first item that was brought up by the board and a lot of comments was the density of this overall project. We have resubmitted the plans and we have reduced the density down to a hundred and thirty units, went down from a hundred and fifty-one to a hundred and thirty. As I mentioned during my walkthroughs in the pre-app, this is not new construction. This is a taking an historic building, repurposing it. You have to use to the, to the building lines, right? It's there, it's existing. You have to use the columns, the, the different levels, and you have to make it work. So we've reduced the number of units. But obviously, we didn't reduce the square footage of the building. That is a constraint. So we ended up making a little bigger units. So we originally had forty-six one beds. Now we only have twelve one beds. We have approximately the same number of two beds, eighty-six compared to eighty-five, but we have more three beds, nineteen to thirty-three. Now, normally, you try to keep apartments, relatively speaking, on a little bit of the smaller side. We feel this property can support the larger square footage, which increases the rent. But being in downtown Bristol and right by the water, you know, this is not Providence and Pawtucket. We feel this is a very desirable location and will accept the higher rents with these little bit of a larger units and, and a little more economic renters to it. The average size of the unit, I know there was some questions about that. The average size is thirteen hundred and thirty-seven square feet based on the current plan that's been resubmitted. This is, I think, a little bigger than the traditional kind of new apartments. If you're just doing new construction, doing eleven, eleven hundred fifty square feet, two bedrooms. Again, the, the, the unit size and the configuration was based upon the existing building and trying to make this work as an overall project. So that was one comment that we heard from the board on the size and, and we came back hopefully with something better and more acceptable. The second item that definitely heard a lot about was the parking. And a couple of the comments on parking, one was the trash located out here. Again, we were hoping to kind of locate it central to everybody because again, you're in a prominent building, bringing your trash out. But we saw and heard the comment of not wanting to be right on the street front, so we ended up locating it in the back, kind of behind the building. Again, this is the Marina, the Haba Master Building down the side street. So that'll be, I think, obviously, a little more acceptable for views and looks. The other item that got brought up a lot was, was our variance and looking for, you know, for additional parking. We've heard it many times throughout here, you know, it's important for us to have as many parking spots as possible. Now, obviously, first for the success of our project and foremost, always like to have about two cars, two spots per. We have three hundred and eleven spots. And now with a hundred and thirty units, we definitely have excess parking as required for us. One of the things we're, and, and, and that is what the hope is in design is. We've heard it many times that, you know, the, the current parking lot, it's an existing parking lot, it's being rented out for Prudence Town Ferry and for other uses. And there's need for parking in this downtown area. So what our hope is, is that we maximize this existing parking lot, lay it out, stripe it, actually prepare, prepare, do it, complete it, actually provide water quality and better because there's nothing out there now. Maintain the existing buffers and, and augment them. And hopefully, the idea is to have additional parking so we are able to rent it out for other uses downtown in the future. It's a good business sense. It's similar to what the current owner Russell is doing now. And that would be our goal. We've done it on other projects, for example, at US Rubber in Providence. We've rented out spaces to water fire buildings that didn't have enough parking. So that is a good business model for us, and that's why we are asking to try to get as much parking as possible on this existing parking lot. With that, and that, that's really, you know, answering it from a developer's side. You know, we, the buffers, you know, has a planted buffer already on there. I talked about replacing the wooden fence over here, but I want to stress it is a parking lot. There are lights there now. It is being used as a parking. It's not always the most efficient because there's no line striping, there's no water quality drainage on the site. So we feel we're going to definitely make improvements for that and make it an efficient parking lot. Definitely, the one concern is, is, is lights and heard that many times is the concern for lighting in the neighborhood. As I've said in the past, we're going to put the lowest level of light and, and directed to just the parking lot. But we are concerned with safeties first. We don't want anybody hiding in the dark shadows. We don't want anybody getting attacked, God forbid, and horror stories. We want to make sure safety is, is, is the utmost important as well and trying to balance those two. We're not looking to light it up like a stop and shop. That is not the goal. It's just to provide the levels of, to provide safe safety to anybody using that, that spot. So just wanted to address a couple of those comments. Inside the building, I know there's some turning radiuses and columns and some other stuff, and as we proceed on with a preliminary, as we get much further into the building code and, and building design, we might lose a spot, gain a couple extra spots. Obviously, it's, we have enough parking inside the building. It's not that, you know, needed if we lose a spot or two based on that. But that'll get much further developed as we continue on with it. So those were kind of two of the items that was concerned. And again, we can obviously, at the end of this, any questions and continue and talk about it. Just I know we're pressed the time a little bit, so I wanted to present at least the responses. The third item, just backing out a second, is the fiscal impact report. The fiscal impact report that was done, it was a checklist item and is a typical completer for a residential subdivision. And, and Mr. Lavato did it as per the standard that's done for a typical subdivision. However, this is not a typical subdivision. We, it is not, we're going out in twenty acres and putting a road in of fifty units and three thousand square foot road and creating new trash removal, new public works, fire and police have to monitor. This is an existing building. It's an existing parking lot. It's an existing road. So when you look at this study, it really needs to not just be a checklist item, needs to take a, a, a level deeper to figure out what's going on. What's a better model for this? With that, a couple of things that we did was we sat down with the Bristol Finance Director and the Tax Assessor with the help of Diane. They were going through a valuation process right now. They were able to give us a more accurate assessed value of where they think these are going to be assessed for both the multifamily as well as the commercial space. Put that on with our current one hundred and thirty units to reflect the new total expected revenue. We also discussed the cost side. Nothing really changed other than the, the ratio with the, the school pupils and the kids, that has a fixed cost. The real one that we kind of focused on was the municipal budget. Now it's just a generic how many people you got in town versus, you know, how many people we think are going to be in this facility. When you kind of dive down into it with the finance director and assessor and looking at the cost of how that budget is made up, a lot of the things just don't apply to us. It is an existing building. It's an existing road. The town already plows the road. The town already services the road. It's not a new road. There, we are a private development. We do our own maintenance on our facility. We do our own trash, so there's no trash pickup or anything like that. There'll be minimal expenses to, you know, recreational and library uses and things like that. There will be some additional police and fire to the site, but you can even debate that a little bit because it is an existing building. It's a huge building. Obviously, mills that are low use are always worried about fire, God forbid, in Worcester and other areas. Russell does his best to keep that building heated as best he could to not have any sprinkler leaks and full protection, but it is a challenge in that size of building. And also, it provides, you know, police needs to monitor that area because it is a huge, big building. So we think once it's fully developed that we will be a good neighbor and to that. And we've seen that in, in other communities and typically, you know, we don't have to do this kind of fiscal impact report for us. We didn't have to do it in Pawtucket, Providence, Coventry, American Torrister and Warren. Because it really applies a little more to a subdivision than kind of a mill redevelopment of an existing building. So we ended up using a increase of twenty-five percent to municipal budget based upon, you know, really looking at the different line items. And when you do that and actually, you know, get to that level, now you get at a much, you know, closer to a net zero difference. The next step, as mentioned, some peoples on the board, was about the sewer. Right now, the currently, there's roof drains that go into the sewer. So when it rains, it's the sewer department is currently treating it. We're going to take all those out, so it'll lessen the flow, especially during those rain events, which are always challenging. Plus, we will have a sewer use fee of over eighty thousand per year. We're going to take some of that negative flow out. We're going to pay our share now with a sewer going in, and that should be a positive impact on the, the sewer budget, which, so to even take a conservative fifty percent of that, now you're almost literally at a break even. Take one step further than that is, is you look at, you know, the beverage and use taxes. Now, you know, this is good, a urban redevelopment. They'll allow people to walk to restaurants, go to Leo's Pizza, get pizza, actually spend some money at, at, at some of the local places, don't have to drive, can just walk home. This is the whole idea of good urban development. You know, Cuidos, I'm sure will get a lot of business from us and from there. So, so you'll see some also increases from that sewer, sewer, beverage and use tax. And I think also it'll help to maintain some of the businesses on Hope Street because the businesses on Hope Street are challenged is because of parking. And I think by being able to walk to, from our site to there will help support some of these businesses and from that. So you have a resubmitted fiscal impact report in your package as well. Last item, not again, going quickly through all this, respectful of the time and just trying to really answer everything. Last one was the affordable discussion, which has been a discussion from day one and varying opinions with all. We've heard some of the comments on there, and so what we proposed is to do a hybrid approach. Do three units that, for the buildings that are currently in the parking across the street, we would make three of those units as affordable. We'd have those monitored. And then ten units would be payment in lieu based on the forty thousand. Now, I know there was a lot of discussion of, well, forty thousand doesn't get you a unit. You can't buy a unit at all for that. Definitely, and that's not what forty thousand is meant to do. Had a long discussion, couple of discussions with Diane Madaris, familiar in town, East Bay Community Development Corp. What that forty thousand does is that provides the gap money for, for her and for a, not her, a nonprofit company like hers. And what that does is similar to when you go buy a house. It's tough getting a down payment. It's tough to get that ten, twenty percent down to buy the house. That will allow her to, or a nonprofit, allow her to then leverage that money. Because there are a lot of money and a lot of funding sources right now out there, she says, for affordable units. But it's that gap financing, that initial twenty percent down payment, because the rents will help pave the majority of the mortgage, but not all of it. And then what happens is by now her owning that unit, using that forty thousand dollars to leverage other financing mechanisms that are out there, she now then owns the unit. And in thirty years, she then now can take that mortgage that's paid off and develop more housing. So it is like, and her goal is to be a self-sustaining developer of, of nonprofit developer affordable housing. And so that seed money then is what this does to create not just housing short term, but also long term in a kind of a life cycle model. So, so, you know, with that four hundred thousand, that idea, obviously, I assume an RFP or something else would go out to the town, to the, to nonprofit developers to figure out how best to leverage that gap money, that seed money to then to be affordable housing that's not just short term. Because the three that are affordable on our site, we would collect the rents and, and it would be ours long term. But the other ten payment in lieu would go to a nonprofit developer for that gap financing, which would then allow it to be not just to get an affordable housing today, but also over the entire life cycle. So those were some comments that we definitely heard from the board loud and clear. We tried to come back with some thoughtful responses on each and Sean from Fuss O'Neil's here, as well as John McCoy, and be happy to open it up, of course, any questions or comments.
Mr. Sullivan, I got one good question. And it comes with the affordable housing. Right now, you've got a hundred and thirty-one units that I wish it was a hundred and twenty-five, but I could live with the one thirty. The thing is, the state of Rhode Island states, they're looking between, I don't say twenty-five percent, that's what they want. I don't think Bristol should allow that much, but I don't think it only allows ten percent. I'm looking for a better figure on that. The ten percent, I, I don't agree on ten percent. It, to me, more likely, at least fifteen. Going a little, almost half, what the state wants. And if you could bend on that, it looks good. So I'm looking for five fifteen instead of ten. You get me? Am I right? Hello?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Are you, am I right or am I wrong?
That's obviously your, your opinion and, and we typically on mill redevelopments because of the additional costs of redevelopment of property like that, don't typically have any affordables. American Torrister didn't have any.
That's, that's wondering. This is Bristol. And, and if they didn't want to abide by the state, then you're going to start to realize Bristol's got other big properties on land. And if we let this go at ten percent, what do I do when somebody from Columbia Fathers sells the place? And they'll say, well, you did it up the other street. Why can't you do it for us?
No, because the reason.
Yeah, because of what?
Because it's an existing building and.
To me, affordable is a little far. If I'm going to ask somebody to build affordable housing and I'm looking for twenty-five percent, I would go down. But I am, I do not agree, and I'm only one vote. I don't agree on the ten percent.
So, Mr. Chairman, let me chime in on that, on that one thought. I have some other comments and questions for Chris as well, but on that one thought, I'm against payment in lieu, and I believe that that is the town policy now. It may not have been back in two thousand eight, but then back in two thousand eight, we approved ninety-eight units, not a hundred and fifty-one or a hundred and thirty. So I'm, you can't have it both ways, Chris. The other comment that I have, and I'd like some more data on it, Chris, is you, you, you hit on one of my hard points at the meeting that unfortunately, when you had COVID, you were not there, but one of my hard points was the. But one of my hard points was the negative fiscal impact. Uh I do not believe and I will not support the citizens of this town paying for any developer's project. I will not agree to that. So I need to know, and you didn't really answer the question, is this a negative fiscal impact to the town of Bristol or not?
Um I believe it's not. And and I say that uh because it is a difficult, you know, obviously, there's not, it's it's a difficult uh truly to, you know, present the data because you don't know exactly, you know, you know, do you have to add one firefighter or or one cop to it? Do you have to, right? What it will be the impact to the municipal budget? How many exact kids will you get? I will do some anecdotal evidence, right? Because that, we again, take everything we got. In Warren, for example, like three or four different mill projects, Pawtucket, American Wire, um we have one in Clinton and American Torister. Typically, they'll uh at those projects, we had a a mixed use kind of theory. They set aside forty, fifty, sixty thousand square feet for commercial space and as well as part of our development. And what they found and what we found was we couldn't rent out that space. So we went back to them and said, all right, hey, we would like to add more additional units. If we were a negative, a negative uh negative drain on the town, they would never allow more units, right? Because it would be a a negative loss for them. All of them saw it as a positive. Warren, John can speak to it too, talked to the town planner, a positive on that. Town of Coventry, same thing, no, we're not getting the town calls of police and fire. We're not seeing those impacts. Um so they allowed us additional units, seventy additional units in Warren, additional units in Pawtucket, additional units in in Clinton. So all of these communities, after they've seen it and actually seen the impact on their community, they they approve more units. So if it was truly a negative drain, they wouldn't approve more because the mill already got redeveloped. And there would be no, you know, there was no spur that they had to approve us by any means. So but they did because they saw it as a positive. And a lot of communities, Warren being one, gave us a tax break. A lot of places, because it, you know, from that kind of evidence, why would people give them, be given us tax breaks to develop these mills? If there were a negative drain on it? So I think the there's not a strict fiscal model. It is for a residential subdivision for something that's already developed like this in this setting. So anecdotally, all those other communities gave us more units after the fact. If we were a drain, they wouldn't because there was there was no need.
So I I I get that, I understand that. Um so I I think what I would want to see then, because you don't have a a definitive answer, because you don't know, it sounds like. So I would want to see an agreement from you that should this go forward? And should the town incur negative revenue because of this project that you would make up the difference? And and I will use the example, and and unfortunately, like I said, you were not at the last meeting. But when I spoke on this topic, I spoke about my experience living in California where I grew up. And in California, it is state law that if a developer comes into an area and wants to develop a housing development, they pay for the roads, they pay for the parks, they pay for the schools, they pay for the entire infrastructure. They charge it back to the homeowners when they buy the homes. But that's how it's done. I see no reason on this planet why the town of Bristol should, uh and you're the benefit of this conversation because you're the topic now. But I see no reason why the town of Bristol should have to pay uh anything in addition, simply because a developer wants to do a project, whether it's you or anybody else. So that that that's my two cents on that. And and you heard my thoughts on the uh payment in lieu as opposed to building the units.
Diane, I've got a question. I don't have a copy of the updated um financial fiscal impact in my package here.
I emailed it to you and I can.
It's in my email, I can pull up my laptop.
Yeah, um actually, I think um somebody is sharing the screen now to show it.
Yeah, that's me if you want me.
Am I, yeah, and I I can get it from my email right here.
Now, let me know what you're looking for specifically, Brian, I can put it on the screen.
No, I've got it right here. I've got a I'm, I've got the Zoom going on my iPad and not my laptop. And I'm I'm blind on a good day, so let me just get here and see what, okay, I've got it now, okay. Chris, I've got a couple of questions. I mean, your your initial, yeah, you're 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 kind of like, hey, we're all rushing in the middle of time. But, you know, um I know it's late and everybody's tired, but this board is not going to rush this through anything at any time. Okay.
Yeah, I know, and and Brian, I originally, obviously, we were continuing, and I thought we were first on the agenda, so I'm just.
I understand. And we've got public input and we've got a lot of things to go over here. And it's not just the affordable. This is like a small piece of of everything that we've got to do. Um so uh, you know, you're making comments like, you know, well, the building was vacant and this is that. And, you know, the road was already in place and things like that. The bottom line is you're adding several hundred people to our town. Okay? And those several hundred people, yeah, they they definitely go to businesses and they definitely spend money, and that's a good thing. But they also drive on our roads, utilize our school systems on a smaller scale for yours, but they still do. Okay, and there's cost involved there. And um our school budget is pushing sixty million. Okay, so these are longstanding, you know, goals that we have to be required to. Um the affordable component is, you know, I'm I'm not necessarily, we get a, there's got to be further discussion with that. But we have, you know, you you mentioned like, well, in Pawtucket, they gave us more units and Warren, they gave us this. Pawtucket is Pawtucket, Warren is Warren. Okay, this is Bristol, this is waterfront, this is the last bookend and the major piece to our waterfront that is incomplete. Okay, and this property is also surrounded by really nice homes and good people who have been here for a long time and that have issues with parking and everything else. So we're going to go through this all as long as it takes, you know? And I I look forward to getting to the uh the point where, you know, the butters can speak and we have letters here and a lot of stuff to go through. So my initial take on this.
Chris, anyone else?
Yeah, Chris, I I got a question about the uh snow removal in the wintertime. Do you have a spot in the parking lot where you plan on storing that?
So so typically, we we have a snow plan in terms of, or we pile one half of it um to there. Some of the spots, we would have to be used at some of the spots, some of the, you know, we'd have to pile some of the snow because there's not a lot of open area to do it. You know, the only good thing is, as we found in other mills and today, you know, you know, everybody's um parking spot, uh cars and license plates. So we usually would have a area, we're going to pile this side first from this hours and to there. But we would have to, we would have to use some of the spots for snow removal.
Yeah, I kind of figured that.
Yeah, there's not much there.
I was thinking like, um, you know, because you wouldn't want to pile the snow with the sand and the salt and stuff that would leach into people's like gardens in their backyard and stuff that might, you know, kill some of the shrubbery and whatnot. You know, just thinking, you know, for the neighbors, you know?
Yeah, all the drains would be on our site and we'd go through our infiltration. So it it it's not like we'd build a pile that would, you know, on our neighbor's lot, you know? All of it would be in our parking lot and would drain on our parking lot through our new subsurface drainage.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good. And then at the uh the meeting back in uh January, I know it's not part of this application, but the the lot at the corner of our church and um things that the town leases. Right now, I think it's a six month lease they do mainly for parking in the uh summertime. And I'm I'm wondering if there's anything that we can we can work out with the town so that we can retain that park in there going forward in the future?
Um, yeah, I mean, we're trying to get as much parking as we can for first successful projects. And then, yeah, we'd be open to if we have excess parking to lease that out.
Right, so, yeah, because I mean, that's pretty important. I mean, especially, you know, the way Bristol's getting to be such a tourist destination that we couldn't possibly have too much parking, you know? And I know that lot stays pretty full all summer long, you know, and I hate to lose it, you know? So if we can kind of keep that in mind, I asked that question last meeting, but you weren't there, so nobody could really answer for it. So what kind of amenities are there in the unit for the uh the tenants? Something similar to what you got in Torister Mill?
Yes, um so um you can kind of see it if I zoom in. So uh typical to our places, you have a gym here, you know, again, similar to what we saw at uh American Torister. You got a gym here, theater room here, game room here, putting green, library, internet cafe. Um so, yeah, very similar to that lineup that you saw at American Torister um to there. Some of them, we have basketball courts. Right now, we don't have any plans. We're also going to have a um exterior deck in back coming off kind of the second floor. So you get some views coming out of the uh looking at the uh at the harbor um to there. So that's kind of the amenities package um inside the building. Outside, there's not a lot of room because it is a very, as we all know, a tight site. Um, you know, we have the 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 walkway in back, um little buyer retention area in back for for the water. You know, we have, you know, we have, we are a pet friendly facility. We'll have something kind of enclosed for the for the pets and for the dogs um for there. There's a small little building um in back over here. We talked about maybe doing some amenities there, a little, you know, again, not a little, I don't know if library is the right word, but something that kind of can, you know, when you're sitting outside and usually a lot of times we'll try to put the grill kind of over in here. Maybe that'll be kind of the grill area. Um, you know, like at uh US Rubber and Providence, we have a couple of grills set up, a little courtyard. And I would envision something like that as part of that amenity building.
Is there any plan for to do anything on the rooftop, any kind of rooftop deck?
Other than um the second floor, not a true rooftop, rooftop, second floor, not to the fifth floor. We have that in Coventry, we have that at US Rubber and Providence, but we do not propose one here.
Okay, and then the south end of the uh boardwalk or the walkway there, does it just stop abruptly there at the Elks Club property or doesn't really show?
Yeah, it stops at our property line, you know, we, you know, obviously can only control our property. Um, you know, we would, you know, we have, there's an easement that's been placed on this for parking for the Elks. So that's why we had to do it there. Obviously, if something changes with the Elks and we'd be happy to talk to them as we understand it, at least that the Elks aren't um, doesn't want a boardwalk around. Um, you know, whatever, we would do whatever, you know, obviously, we'd love to see a boardwalk into there, similar to what we have at Torister um and to connect up. Um but obviously, we can only control what's on our site right now. And we would, you know, we'd be happy to meet with the Elks as well um for that.
Okay. Chris? Are you all done, Tony?
Yes.
Chris, are you going to do anything to the parking lot, make the spaces bigger? See that you're you're limited is so many apartments? Like you said, there was some small, you dropped it from ten to eight. Are you going to go back to the normal width of the parking places? Line it up, double line, single line?
Uh I'll let Sean answer that, but I believe we're still going with the same parking spot as we proposed before to again, to try to get as many parking spots as we can.
But you've got a hundred thirty, three hundred eleven.
I agree, and and I just know there's a tremendous need downtown for parking, as as mentioned by the board and to there. So the hope is to be able to rent out those additional spots to the Prudence Island Ferry.
Underneath the bridge, underneath the building?
Oh, inside the building?
Yes.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll get, so we haven't, we haven't, we haven't gone to that level of detail with the building code in there. Um, you know, that'll be part of preliminary further on as we get down to um much further along design of the building.
Anybody else?
Chris, do you know the uh the size of the, what what's the width and the length of the parking spaces? Do you know, Afian?
Inside the building?
No, the outside, the ones on the west side. Are they nine feet by eighteen or?
This Mr. Mergo, they're nine feet by eighteen feet. This is Sean Martin, yes.
Yeah, so what what's the, what's the zone, ten?
The the zone is ten.
Ten.
And with the space in between though, correct?
Yeah, it's a, it's ten feet overall. Um, the the double painted lines, basically, the space between the lines is eight feet. Um but you measure to the center, center of the double spaced lines, which is ten.
Correct, okay, so you'd have the double space.
Yeah, a Mr. Uh, one of the board members asked last time, like, how many spaces would you get if you went down or you went to a compliance space? And we did an estimate of that and we came up with a number of two hundred seventy six. And I will point out that um that removes, you can see in this parking lot, there's some tandem spaces, removes the tandem spaces. Um in this latest iteration of the drawing, by moving the dumpsters, this parking lot added six spaces to what's what's shown. Um, there was a typographic error in the table, the parking table, so the total right now is three hundred and eight, not three hundred and eleven. And um that total changed because, as you know, from moving the dumpsters to the um to the west side of the street, um we had to remove some of the parking spaces in the small lot that's surrounded by the building next to the armory. Um so that parking lot is all commercial spaces at this point. You know, the residential, yeah, the residential spaces that were taken out, were taken out to accommodate the uh.
Sean, I was the one, I was the one that asked the question.
Yes.
So um but you, I think you just said two hundred, you.
Two seventy six.
Two seventy, two seventy, which is still more than um what you needed or what you wanted if you had two, two per 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 unit. Um according to what Chris said, so why not do that?
Again, because we're we're trying to, from all the discussions we've heard, is there's a tremendous need for parking in this area. So the idea is to be able to rent them out to the Prudence Island Ferry, to the local people that that Russell has now.
Yeah, Chris, but there's another parking lot on the corner with thirty four spots that somebody said we'd like to have and has not been addressed. And the fact of the matter is, everything, obviously, for you is is about uh capitalizing on as much as you po- you possibly can. But we get, we haven't, we haven't gotten anything. Yeah, I mean, you guys want more parking spaces. You want to keep a a parking lot that's part of this building out of the equation. You want to keep six um marina spots that were allocated the last time. You want to use all of the exceptions that were um uh allowed during the the approval of in two thousand and eight. And since then, and I know there hasn't been any activity, and I know you guys are good at what you do, but all, all I see is you want more and more and more, and no one has said, we'd like, we'd like to negotiate and get and give you this, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's 10%. Whether it's affordable housing, whether it's ten percent, whether it's a parking lot, whether it's a mar- a, a marina space. Uh, you know, the, the, the biggest thing that we've gotten from you guys at this point is that you're willing to not have a driveway coming in from Hope Street. That's it. It'll be a walkway, a walkway only. Listen, I like the project. I think something needs to be done. But you wanna have, uh, a six thousand square feet of space for commercial versus what was originally approved at twenty-five. You don't have enough of a percentage of the property, uh. Uh, that was originally out, or at least the town required for open space or, or whatever. We haven't gotten anything. You, you haven't sweetened the pie for the town at all, and all I'm asking for is you guys to consider, uh. You know, taking it on the chin a little bit because you're gonna have a great project. That's enough from me.
Well, how about they present a project that doesn't cost the town money? That actually follows the zoning for the parking. Okay, is agreeable to the unit count that we agreed to give them. You know what I mean? Like, the, these asks are huge. Is there any, Chris, is there any plan, um, to expand that parking later on, building a deck or anything like that?
No.
Would you, would you be willing to give up your rights to do that?
To build up a parking deck?
Well, you're asking for zone changes to the parking that could be interpreted as later on down the road, you could build a parking deck or a garage or something else.
And we would have to come back for that, right? I mean, it's not like a by right use.
I know that, but it's just one step further. I mean, would you be willing to, we, we have the butters. You know, that are close by.
Yeah, we don't, we don't plan to put a parking garage in or any sort of development in that parcel. That's not what we're looking to do.
Okay, so you just wanna, just wanna rent out their property. They don't wanna give up nothing. You got five parking lots that were all geared for this building. Now you got them all, now you wanna run them all out. Nothing for the town of Bristol. Is there any way you would donate one? No? You know, you're putting this project in, uh. In jeopardy, in jeopardy. Because i- it seems like, like I stated three meetings ago. You got the whole pie. You don't even wanna give us a piece. You wanna eat the whole pie.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't agree with that, I, I think.
You know, I, I'm a voter.
Again, I, and again, I've, I've, I've seen this project twenty years ago when I was first at, at Stone Harbor, all right? This project has sat after your approval for fourteen years.
You wanna compare this, this project with Stone Harbor?
That's what it was originally approved for in that bigger unit, ninety-eight units. Unfortunately, that, that project, that approval that was there has now sat for fourteen years. We feel and we've been we feel this is a good project for, and we feel that we are doing something. This, you look at what this building could become to there, and we think it's a positive for Bristol, not a negative.
Well, that's your opinion.
I mean, it could go back to commercial and have a lot more impacts to everybody cuz it's the use of impact, or it's just gonna be abandoned. That's not a good use of anything either. We feel, this is a, we typically are always supported in the communities and as a positive. And we think this will be a positive. I think American Tourister is a positive than what it used to be. I don't think the town of Warren disagrees with that, and I don't think most people do.
I'm not saying, look, like I tell every person that comes in front of us. This is not Warren, this is not Providence, this is Bristol, Rhode Island.
Agreed, but I still think, uh.
Wait a minute, I'm talking. And there's no way that you're gonna put up a project o- on this road if you don't bend. And it seems like you don't wanna bend. You want everything. Then if you're gonna have everything, fine with you.
Yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off. I thought we had been, I thought we decreased the number of units on it. I thought we went to a hybrid approach.
My, my colleague wanted one twenty-five. Did you go down on one twenty-five? No, let's try one thirty. We'll sneak in five more. By my right, I won't even have a hundred. Let me shut up.
Mr. Chairman, I, do you think we should open up the public hearing? We've had some residents that have been waiting quite a while.
I think so. Seems like we'll be here twelve o'clock, but we'll accomplish something.
Understand, people, we're on a, a time crunch to get this, for this, to have a response on this. Approval or denial, and that, that meter continues to tick. Um. Diane perhaps can tell us, uh, what the new extension is, but I think it's April twentieth.
You're correct, Armin. Yeah, it's April twenty-second unless the, the applicants agree to a further extension, so that would take us to your April meeting.
Right.
Um, unless they agree to extend it, yeah.
So, we have to get at what we need to get at, um, so that we can at some point make a decision.
So you're opening the meeting to the public comment portion now? Is that what I heard?
I'll, uh.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to do that, but I'd also like to, um. Ask or, or possibly make it so that the, uh, public comment is limited to a few minutes. Cuz there's a lot of people, and they can't be on for fifteen and twenty and thirty minutes, you know, ten minutes gabbing away. I mean, I don't wanna cut people off, but we've got a lot to get through, so, um, I would ask that the, uh, public comment, I don't know if we can do that, but keep it to three to five minutes max.
I'll set the timer on my phone and try to track it, so, um, please also state your name and your address for the record, and if you're on a phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and then unmute yourself by pressing star six. And the first person with the hand raised is Elaine White.
You, Elaine White, eleven Constitution Street. Um, I'm hoping that the board has seen the lovely collaborative, uh, letter that the butters got together and thoughtfully put together for the past three months where we just honed in on one particular area, which is the parking lot. And, you know, it's, it's difficult for us because we live on that abutting section, and I know that really appreciate some of the comments that the board has already made. But I do feel, Chris, in your case, that you glossed over the importance of protecting the butters for the parking lot. We are really, really requesting, um, a buffer zone that is of strength and power to avoid the very important, um, misuse that will happen when the parking becomes what it is. I've heard a lot of different numbers. I understood that the numbers were split. That there would be a hundred and fifty spots underneath the parking garage, for the parking garage, and the other rest of it would be in the parking lot. So I, I would like clarity on the number cuz I don't know what that is. And I know another thing is that I, I do feel that, um, you know, what Mr. Squatrito is saying about the asks. I, I think that we, we do hear a lot about the positives that it's going to impact the business, but we're also forgetting that it's gonna turn into Disney World down there. What I, and I say that kind of jokingly, but not. Because the traffic and the volume and the noise and the lighting and all of that is going to be a huge impact on that little corner, which is already a very tight corner. And I don't wanna gloss over that. I really don't. I want us to really consider the impact that this is gonna have. I'm in favor of the apartments. I think they're gonna be fun. I, I own a business, so for me, it's gonna be a, a fun, exciting change of energy down there. But I think if we don't focus on what that parking lot is going to do and the, the negative impact of the traffic, we are going to have a nightmare down there. And I, I don't wanna gloss over it, and I really wish, Chris, you had come to the table with a lot more consideration and thought about what we so, um, kindly asked for in our four-page letter that just focused on the parking lot. I'm disheartened that we did not get more clarity about your intent of a, a stronger buffer zone for us. And, um, that bums me out a lot, so I'll, I'll move on cuz I know that Nancy and Mary Ann have a lot to say too. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. The next, um, hand raised is Mary Ann Bergen-Holz.
Um, hi, I'm Mary Ann Bergen-Holz, oops. I don't know what happened to, I got moved. Oh, I'm Mary Ann Bergen-Holz, three sixty-six Hope Street. I am listed as in a butter right now, um, and I would like to make some comments about what was said today. As you know, that I put a, um, uh, very carefully researched, um, in, uh, fiscal impact that this would have on the town. Put the letter to the newspaper and I also spoke on that before. The fiscal, the new fiscal impact statement that goes from what in reality would have been six hundred thousand dollar cost to taxpayers a year is now at sixty-five thousand dollars per the developer. I think that that's something that, um, is, um, not a real number. What my numbers were based on were the aggregate of residents, regardless of single-family, multi-dwelling units, apartment buildings, high density in the community. Bristol is one of the highest density communities in Rhode Island. So the next one is. Um, the developer is saying that it's an existing building, and so they don't wanna put any, um, affordable housing in it. At the same time, he's saying that they're getting tax breaks, and this is why other towns are so thrilled with them. Well, they're given tax breaks because it is an existing building. It's a historic property, and they must put in affordable housing. They cannot pick and choose that they will take three units from not inside that building, which is a much smaller percentage, and say that that's going to be affordable housing. Affordable housing is not to be separate, is not to be on one side of the building. It's to be interspersed throughout the whole building. That's the law in the state of Rhode Island. Um, I would be against expanding the WPUD zone. I haven't seen any definition for WPUD on, in the online code. I'd like to know why that is, uh, uh, something that's being talked about without it being in the code. And the other thing is that in expanding the WPUD zoning, yes, many developers do say they have no plans. That doesn't, that's, and they're literally correct. It doesn't mean that they don't have designs on having plans later. And I think that the town needs to look at what that would look like in the future if they decide to come back and want to put additional housing in there. As you see, they jammed in a ton of additional housing in Warren. And then, um, finally. The WPUD should not be expanded. Not only that, but there must be deeded parking spaces instead of a zoning change in the parking lot. It should be a restricted deed on that, on the other, um, um, property that is abutting with deeded rights for parking that goes with every unit in that place. Otherwise, when, when we don't restrict them to deeded parking, that becomes a free-for-all. There would be no guarantee that they won't be leasing out spaces and renting out spaces to other people, opening up certain areas to the public to pay for spaces and leaving the residents of those units without the parking spaces. And the last thing that I'd like to say is, we do need to look at how much extra cost it is to the town and what it may be for code enforcement for the town. Because the reputation of this developer is very bad. I don't know if anyone has looked into it, but they have multiple lawsuits, multiple EPA regulation, um, problems. Fire marshal problems, forty-one, um, problems by the state fire marshal in one of the, uh, developments that they have. And I think it's time that people look at, and I don't know if the, if the, um, town can actually look at a developer's reputation when they come forth and ask for all these breaks that they're asking for, but the town of Bristol needs to be careful. And especially the people who are voting on this, that this not become an albatross around their necks for what we leave in this town for everyone who lives here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. The next person with the hand raised is Rick Chase.
Hi, Rick Chase, twenty-one Constitution Street, and I'll keep this brief. Uh, I really reiterate what, um, Mary Ann and Elaine both said. Um, we signed a on the letter as, I just wanted a few things. I wanted to correct some of the statements that Sean or Chris said early on. They did say that it's an existing parking lot that's lighted, um, with a buffer. Um, yes, it's a parking lot. Right now, it's maybe twenty percent full. There might be twenty cars in there right now. It's not really an active parking lot like they're looking to do, and they're obviously looking to maximize the use of that parking lot. Uh, there is no lighting whatsoever in that parking lot now, and obviously there will be going forward, so. Uh, in our letter, we had issues and wanted the lighting addressed. Um, so again, there's zero light out there. I look out my backyard right now. It's pitch dark. It's great. Uh, as far as the buffer goes, yes, there's an existing buffer. It hasn't been maintained. I can see right through the buffer now into that parking lot, so it has not been maintained, and I can even see the illegal plastic orange fence that they put up a year or so ago, um, which I'm sure was not approved by the HDC. Uh, so they need to maintain that buffer. They need to address a lot of our concerns that we had talked about. Um, they talk about renting the spot out, and they said multiple times maximizing the park. So as Mary Ann said, we absolutely need a deed restriction to that lot, that it cannot be built on, that it's only used for surface parking and only for the residents of that, uh, of that, uh, unit. Um, those are my points, um, so I'll pass it to the next person.
Thank you, Rick. The next hand raised is Caroline Jacobus.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Um, I'd like to speak on behalf of the Friends of Historic Bristol. We're a, uh, nonprofit with over five hundred active members. Um, and I'd like to make one major point, which is that we urge the zoning board members to adhere to existing Bristol codes and ordinances and master plan. Um. These were developed over many years with the input of many citizens at great cost to the town. And this is not the time to start issuing waivers right and left to a developer who says they want them. Um. I still haven't gotten a response to the density question that I asked at a previous meeting. Uh, I believe the municipal code says that there are only seventy-eight units allowed in that building. Uh, when the developer speaks to a master plan in two thousand and eight that allowed ninety-eight units, that master plan no longer holds any legal value. It, it is expired. Um, so. I'd like an answer as to why suddenly we're talking about a hundred and thirty units when by law it appears that we can only have seventy-eight. Affordable housing, Bristol has a twenty percent requirement with no option for payment in lieu. So why are we talking about thirteen units, which is only ten percent? And payment in lieu for ten of those thirteen units? Uh, public accommodation by law, Bristol says twenty-five percent. And we're talking about what, three percent, something ridiculous? Why aren't we adhering to Bristol code? Um. I, I will close and simply say again, please adhere to our codes and our ordinances and our master plan. They were created because this is what the town wanted. This is what the people said they wanted. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline, and, and I don't see anybody, um, who has not yet spoken. Elaine White has asked to speak again.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to add one thing that I hope we can consider. And it is that if, if we approve this, that we definitely ask for a condition that there is no future rooftop deck, um, and also that we, um. Really think about, I wanna go back to just the, the last piece of traffic flow. really think about, I want to go back to just the last piece of traffic flow that we, I don't think we think about enough because if you don't live down there, you don't really see it. But just my neighbors alone, the FedEx and the UPS truck comes to my house, you know, twice a day because I get so many deliveries. And I just want to think about, you know, 300 times that or 150 times that every day, seven days a week, where are they going? Where are they parking? How are they delivering? Just that little teeny piece of traffic without considering all the cars that are parking in the lot. We have to think about what is going to happen down there. So I'd like conditions to be put in. I think Mary Ann's points were really detailed and I appreciate them. There was just a quick mention of a basketball court. I think, Chris, you said that was inside. I just want to say out loud that I don't want a basketball court outside. I used to go on a camping ground and there was basketball courts everywhere and the noise factor is like water torture. So if we can just make sure that doesn't happen, I know that's a little, little teeny thing in the big picture. So that's all.
Thank you Elaine. The next person with the hand raised is Jane Lavender.
Hello, did you just say my name? Hi.
No, Margot, I said Jane Lavender. Jane just had to unmute. There she is. You're next, Margot.
Can you hear me?
Yes, but we're hearing a terrible echo.
You are fine. Let me turn off.
You got purreds?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, it's much better. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jane Lavender. My husband and I are here. We live at 50 Thame Street across from the Robin Rudd Factory. And I guess I'm very disappointed, Chris, with the fact that all of the neighbors, the abutters have worked very hard to come up with some really great solutions for the parking and the impact. And I hear just more and more exceptions to all the rules and codes of Bristol. And it's, it's very disappointing. We had hoped for more buffers and less cars. We are concerned about the surface being permeable, the trees. There are so many things that could affect us that, and there are too many exceptions in everything, all of the variances. And I think about the number of cars of people in our neighborhood that park on street parking on the side of Thame Street next to the factory. And I would think a lot of the renters will just park there so they don't have to pay for rental spots. So it's the, the whole traffic thing needs to be looked at, the size needs to be looked at and the affordable housing needs to be looked at. And I'm very disappointed that our letter did not get more attention. Thank you.
Thank you Jane. The next person with hand raised is Margot Jones.
Hi, good evening. We are new residents of Bristol and in fact have a house a block away from this proposed development. And as an architect who's worked in historic preservation my entire career, I, I submitted a letter which had some comments and I just want to reinforce that there are many developers who would make a proposal that meets your require, your planning board rules, your zoning regulations, every aspect that this developer doesn't seem to want to comply with. And they would do it in a way that was more historically sensitive and appropriate. I'm very specifically worried that there are so many bedrooms that don't have windows and that if there are families in these units, that, that that's just an unhealthy condition for most people and especially children. So I hope that you will take, I agree with the Friends of Historic Bristol. I think they've made very important points and that you will take those under consideration in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. The next person with the hand raised is Nancy Chase.
Yeah.
Nancy Chase, you're up if you're ready.
Yeah, is it okay?
Margot, you were, you're, you're all set. I'm just, you see Nancy and she's unmuted, but I'm not hearing her.
What are you waiting for?
We're waiting for Nancy Chase. She's got her hand raised and we recognized her and we're just waiting to see if she can maybe adjust her microphone.
Diane, I just texted her, so I'm, I'm not sure what's happened.
Oh, okay. Thank you Elaine. We'll just stand by for a moment.
She's not, she's not responding to me, so I'm not sure what happened. Maybe she's going to jump on Rick.
I was just going to say we had Rick earlier.
Yeah, I don't know what happened.
She's muted again, so.
She said she's not sure why it's not working, so.
She may be sleeping.
She's asking if she can call. Yep, go ahead, Nancy.
So if she calls in, it's hello? Oh, there you are. Yes, hello.
Hi, sorry about that. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, my, my computer's not working there, I guess. I just want to thank everyone for their thoughtful consideration of the matter. Obviously, we live downtown and, you know, we know what the day to day conditions are. I want people to think about putting 300 more cars on Fields Road or Hope Worth or Beach Road. The connector streets that empty out onto 114 and 136. Concerning about things about what happened if Duncan Donan's had like a drive through. And we're looking at a very compressed area adding 300 cars. The intensity of use, you know, we're requesting a buffer zone around that parking lot and a fence. That's not a purple pill. That's not going to be enough. And for the folks who frequent the Elks Lodge, who go to church at St. Michael's, it's going to change the way Bristolians experience this part of town. Given the density, I cannot see us avoiding a traffic light on Constitution and Hope. I can't see us avoiding a traffic light at like the Katera School. I mean, this is going to change the character of downtown and I really agree with what the planning board members are saying. I mean, this is going to be the legacy of, of the planning board, the town council. And we really need to consider, like, we're awake. The people downtown, the parking lot of butters, we're all awake. I'm hearing people complaining about traffic on Wood Street. And I tell you, we haven't seen anything yet. So I, I just want to anticipate, you know, the needs of not just us, the abutters, but everyone who uses the common area of downtown. It's, it's a shared space and, and it shouldn't, a small group shouldn't be crowding out, you know, really the assets of the town. It should be available to all the people in Bristol. And, you know, I don't want the downtown to becoming so crowded with traffic that Bristolians just pass on going downtown because it's just a mess. And, and I'm really concerned with that happening as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Nancy. I do not see any other hands, hands raised at the moment. Oh, yeah, no, I do not see any other hands raised. If you're on a phone, the hands raised is star nine.
If not, should we give the applicant a chance to respond to the specific questions?
That'd be, that'd be wise, Andy, sure. So Chris, we have no additional public comments at the moment, so if you want to respond.
Obviously, there's a lot there. And it's, it's, you know, what we're trying to do is, you know, build a consensus to do this project. And there seems to be a lot of veering opinions from everybody. And, and, you know, we, we hope by reducing the units down to 130 and, and to do it if
Increasing.
if the, if the major comply was the, the parking to reduce the number of parking spots and meeting those and reducing those waivers and increasing some of those buffers. Yeah, we can definitely, we can definitely proceed with, with that. You know, kind of go point to point and enter there. And again, this master plan level detail.
That it?
That's it.
Tony, take us out.
I still don't see any more hands raised. I don't know, Andy, if, if you want them to close the public hearing yet or if they're going to be asking for more documentation, but I do not see any more hands raised.
I mean, I think we can be through with the public comment section. And I guess I would ask the applicant's attorney, are you, are you, do you want to be presenting anymore? Or are you resting your case? Or Chris, if you're the one who's speaking for, that sounds like you're done. Is that correct?
If the board wishes for more, more data specifically to, and needs, we'll definitely come back. And, you know, if you guys have a, you know, written list of specific items that you want us to try to get it addressed to be able to get this into a, a box that you can support. Yeah, we'd be, you know, definitely, we'll come back again next month with some additional stuff, specifically what you're looking for to try to see if we can do it and, you know, and not walk away from this project.
I have a, a question for the, for the chairman or Diane. If we, so they have until April now, right? We have until April to okay this or deny it, correct? Or it's going to go.
Right.
Yes, you have to act by April 22nd or it's approved by default unless the applicant asks for an extension. And I think, you know, Andy and I were sort of looking at this earlier. If, if you directed us to, for a decision and we, you know, drafted something and came back in April, that would still be compliant. But if it goes past the April 22nd date, you'll either have to have a special meeting, I'm sorry, if it goes past the April 14th planning board meeting date, you'll either have to have a special meeting or, you know, the applicants would have to agree to continue it.
Would they?
We don't even have consensus between board members on unit density. You know, we're, we are way apart on a lot.
Will he give us another month?
What did you do? So Mr. Chairman?
Right, right. I think you and Jerome were speaking at the same time, but that's okay. It, it sounds like you're requesting if the applicant would agree to extending this for another month.
Extended, yes, another month. May.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, speak to Brian too on that behalf. It's, it's not, it would be try to figure out how we're going to get to, whether it's May or April. We seem to, like Brian said, had a diverse set of opinions here. And, you know, want to see what that roadmap is to, to, to build that, you know, consensus or not, you know, to your comment, Brian.
I'm just kind of going over like, paying attention to all the board members. We have, we don't have consensus on the affordable component. We don't have consensus on unit density. We don't have consensus on parking. I mean, this is not where I would hope we would be, and I'm sure you agree, Chris, where we'd be at this point.
So, so how do we get there? Like, you know?
If, if we're up against a time crunch in that we have to act, then the most, then I would have to, you would force me to, or someone on this board to force a motion to, to deny it completely. And then you start from scratch again. I don't want to necessarily have to do that. I think that's what you're saying, Diane, right? Am I wrong in saying that?
Yeah, you have to take action and if, you know, if, if you don't take action and they don't agree to an extension, then it, it can be approved by default, which is not what, what we want. So.
I think what Chris is saying, if I may, I think what Chris is saying, as I hear him, is that he might be willing to do an extension, but we just need some more guidance. We don't want to waste another month and have no guidance back in May and be no further along than we are now even in March. So I think.
John, I think, I think we've told you that. You've heard it in, in a number of meetings. Listen, I'd like to have this project done, but I'm not opposed to walking away from it. And I'm not opposed to, to speaking to, to the rest of the board members. I'm just, I'm not ready to make a decision. And the, we, we talked about this for two hours the last meeting. We're not getting any of the answers that we asked for. The only thing that, that, that you came back with today is, you know, some, something on the parking, which is not exactly what we were looking for. Something on the facade.
And the reduction of density.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, and a reduction of density, which is not what somebody on this board recommended the last time. However, you guys have to take the action. We're, we're going to vote as to whether we can live with it or not. You have to decide what you can live with and what you can't live with. Address our issues so that we can give you a reasonable vote. I would love to see something happen down there. But today, I'm not ready to vote for it. I'm not ready because I don't have any answers. Or at least the answers that I thought we should be getting. I don't know how anybody else feels.
So let me, let me, let me share my thoughts on it. If, if I were asked to vote right now, I would vote no. And because I, I'm hearing way too many negatives and very few positives on it. And as I said at the outset in the last meeting, I love the idea of the project, but it's got to be right for the town of Bristol. Right now it is not right for the town of Bristol. So I would say, go back and look at what we agreed to in 2008 and come forward with something that is close to that, which as I recall, met a lot of the standards and ordinances at the time and I think would fit many of the requirements of today. But you got to start with something. You can't start with where you are now at 151, you go to 130 and you haven't addressed anything else. It's not going to work. If, if that's, if that's your, to put it in a negotiation parlance, if that's your best and final offer, then I would say no. So you got to come back with something that we can accept. You know what the laws say in the town of Bristol? You know what we agreed to back in 2008? You've heard what the abutters have said. You got to do something that works for the town of Bristol.
You know, I think that was me, that meeting in January that said, you know, maybe you could meet us halfway from the 98 that was approved back in 2008 to the 151 and you came back with 130, which I, I thought was pretty close myself, but I can see that there's a lot of people I don't too happy with it. So I don't know, I, I still want to work with you guys to try to make this happen, you know, and maybe we can you know, strengthen the buffer in the parking lot, you know, keep those neighbors happy and I don't know. I mean, I'm not totally opposed to it at all. I mean, I, I, I think it's a good plan. I, I think if it was, you know, new construction from the ground up, you know, then we could adhere to the zoning requirements as they are. But you, you know, you're refurbished in an old factory. I mean, things can't be the same, you know. The rules have to be bent a little bit to make a project like that work. I mean, it's a huge project. We want these people to walk away and that building sits empty for another 10 years and deteriorates. I mean, I don't, you know, but that's just my opinion.
Well, my opinion is I got two things. Affordable housing, I don't like the 10%. I wish it was higher. And the parking lot with from eight to back to normal size with two stripes. That's my grip.
Well, can I say, Jerome, that I, I Well, can I say, Jerome, that I I measured the parking spaces over at the Prudence Prairie Dock, and they're eight feet wide. By eighteen feet deep. Now, they're proposing nine feet wide. And it, I mean, you can fit, you know, a full-size pickup truck. It's it's kind of tight, you know, a smaller car.
Right.
Well, and that they're proposing nine feet by eighteen, which to me is is a decent sized spot.
You think you can put your truck in there?
Nine foot by eighteen, yeah.
All right. I'm thinking about the ones underneath the building.
Right.
It's not. No lines, no, no double lines. And I don't care. I don't think anybody with an SUV. Is gonna park in these spaces. So if we agree on something, you 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 eliminated. So-called thirty thirty places. So that makes the park a lot bigger. And just spread it out a little. Make them normal. You got parking places over there, I bet you they count a parking place for motorcycle.
Yeah, those, the motorcycle parking wasn't included in their calculations.
You sure?
Yep, well, that's what it said.
Yeah, that's what that said. That's my, that's my, that's my two gripes. And if they don't approve on those two. They they're not gonna get my vote. So that's my homework.
Well, I make a motion that we, this meeting be continued to the April meeting. At that point. The question, that some of the, all of the things that we've talked about tonight should be answered. And we go to a vote that at that date.
I'll suck in that motion.
Roll call office.
So just, did you want to ask the applicant for an additional thirty days, or are you gonna just?
Well, I mean, that would be my fallback position. They should be prepared to do that in April. If 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 we get the same kind of questions. From the board, because, you know, quite honestly, they're at risk of not being able to do the project. Maybe it okay, but I.
Yeah, great. We 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 mentioned, we mentioned last month about lighting at the parking lot plans and things like that. We heard nothing tonight about. This is what we're gonna do for lighting. This is how it's gonna be let. This is where we, this is gonna be. We heard none of that. We heard, well, yeah, kind of. I think maybe, you know what I mean? So it's just frustrating, Chris, when you're, we're trying to get to something we can actually vote on.
Tom Martin had his hand raised. Sean, were you asking to say something?
I made, I provided testimony about the landscaping and lighting at the last hearing. So I guess for for our benefit moving forward, is is the question about the parking more related to. Whether not just the parking spaces, it could be increased to comply with zoning, but increasing the buffers? And maybe that's a question specifically with Mr. Clark. What I had said at the last time that the, right now, there's about three trees that are actually on the property, and the more trees would be planted. And other landscaping would be planted to augment what's there, but also comply with the zoning. And that the lighting would be pedestrian scale LED with cutoffs and, you know, house side shields and all that sort of thing. To minimize the impacts on the butter and butters. And I know that was a big concern of theirs last time.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you you heard the abutters tonight. Their their concerns are the buffer. And if it should be increased, I don't know if it could be increased, but I think if you eliminate the parking amount, you would. That would afford you the the room to do a buffer, you know.
Yep, and I wanted to say that the lighting, the lighting plan and the design would be done at the preliminary plan stage. But I at least wanted to conceptually say what the goals are, because I realize that it is surrounded by residences and that. You know, this would be a more of an impact than exists today as regards to lighting. That doesn't, you know, doesn't really, so at least.
Is it gonna be public comment in if you extend it to April?
I think the board has closed the, I think they've closed the public comment portion of the meeting.
I don't think we've done that yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did.
I don't think you have.
We will.
I know, but I just want to know if you're, when you, if you extend this to April, will there be public comment allowed in the April meeting?
The board has to vote on that tonight. They're either gonna close the public hearing or or keep it open. I don't, they haven't voted yet on it. Okay, thank you. To know that, but I I think the other thing, just, you know, some of these. Requirements are preliminary submission requirements, which is why you don't necessarily have them as part of your plan set. But I do hear what the board's asking in terms of just giving that level of confidence in response to the concerns from the abutters.
I mean, would would you guys be able to draft a, a, a working? You know, I'm not looking for a draft of an approval, I'm looking for a working draft of a conditional approval. How we could get to that stage and get to that approval. Everybody has a couple little comments on each and trying to. You know, form a consensus with your own selves too of of getting at least close to what we think we can get a framework. That would be acceptable to the board and to the neighbors.
Well, did, I'll speak to that. It would probably be helpful if. The five of us or seven of us got together so that. We kind of agreed on what the issues are. We may not necessarily support. Or or disapprove of some of those concepts on an individual basis, but at least. We'll know that, eh, this is the most important, or this is not as important. Or I could, I could give up on that. For example, the density. I mean, I could, maybe I could give up on the hundred and thirty units. But there are other things I may not want to give up on. Am I making sense? That you guys understand me? There were some things they're asking for that I'm okay with. But. That's me. But I think it's important that we get together somehow. Post another meeting, schedule another meeting for, you know, without other items on the agenda. So that we can talk about this a little bit. Because we can't, we can't do it any other way.
No, you have to do it at a meeting. And and I think, you know, I could maybe help summarize some of the points that the board made. I mean, there are. There are sort of general themes, you know, the parking, the buffering. The.
Lighting.
The lighting, I mean, I can kind of, I can kind of summarize them. I'm sure you've been, you know, rating them down.
Yeah, I mean, it just, as an example, the buffering, do we really need more buffering? Or is improved buffering sufficient? And we can talk about those things. And that'll address issues with the, with the, with the.
So may I suggest that we. Close the public comment period, which which you haven't done. And. Do you want to schedule a special meeting to be held, not, as I said, not as a public hearing, but as a public meeting, essentially a workshop? Session, so you can discuss and try to reach a consensus on. How the majority of the planning board feels about those different issues in time for us to prepare a draft decision for the April meeting?
I think so.
I'm for that.
Is there any chance we can start meeting in person again?
Yes.
This is a big project. I'd like to see the next meeting in person.
Can I just make, the public meeting is not closed yet. I would like to say one more thing, so I just want to make sure I get one more thing in before we close that public meeting.
I I see you. I was just, I'm just making sure the board members are all done. Yeah. So do you want to recognize Elaine White for? A public comment?
I'm sorry, you're just, you're all stuck with me. Listen, there's, it seems to be that there, the plan is not so strong. That, you know, Brian isn't even clear of what the plan, I mean, Brian is talking about this, and I'm thinking to myself, this feels still very loosey goosey to me. There's not a real clear concise plan. We've been asking for a lot of different things. We were hoping that we would get some of those things. And I just don't think that if we extend this to April and not to have a public comment is fair to the public. This is a huge project. It's huge. It's one of the biggest projects that's been hap- that's happening in Bristol. And to not allow us with, I mean, I would say if we came today and we said, well, this project, we really have a clear understanding of all the things that they want to do. That they're gonna give to us, and we don't have that feeling. And I just don't think that it's finished. I don't think we can even, we, it's fair to the public to even say that we're not allowed to speak again in April. So I wish that they had come with a more serious.
But 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 I.
I'll stop.
Elaine, I think that.
Finish, because I want to go to bed too. I know you all do.
We've heard from every, everyone that wanted to speak at this point. We, we've, we're addressing your concerns. Or anybody that smokes concerns, so that we can make a reasonable decision. But we will never get out of the decision, because if something new is gonna come up. I mean, let's deal with what we have and 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 advise them. What we think are the issues, so that they can come back to us and and we can make a vote. Some, I mean.
And I think just to jump in, Armin, so a lot of, a lot of the requisites for. The preliminary phase are going to get into the details that the neighbors have raised questions about. I think it's just. Making sure that, you know, whatever the board needs at the master plan phase. Can be achieved, but a lot of the details will come at preliminary.
Right, the details might, Diane, but. But I think Chris is saying. I know that there are master plan issues or preliminary issues, but you're asking about them now. I don't have the answers. Help me, help me give you the answer. I think that's what he's saying. So that's where I am.
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's two separate things here. There, there really doesn't seem to be a question about more information. They've already provided far more information than one would have at master plan normally anyway. This isn't a question of of. An applicant that's not provide, that that there's just something more that you, you know, you don't have at this point. I think the, what the board is concerned with is there hasn't been the concessions and the changes to the substance in the plan. That the board wants to see. So I I don't know that, I don't know that there's any ability to say, well, let's continue it. And come back with something different, because they've agreed, they don't want to come back with a change to their plan, and it's not just coming back with some. Document, they've already done that. As far as like, I guess, the example would be the impact statement. They've, they've, they've fixed the impact statement, they believe they have. So that's, that's done, so it's not like another one that matters. Or more plan and, you know, the height of the lights and a lighting plan showing the actual candle power and the spread off. The property line and everything like that. That's, that's a, that's a preliminary plan item, not a master plan item. So a- again, I guess I would come back to, my suggestion would be to. Close the public hearing, close it completely, no need, not not to hear from anybody. I don't think it's fair. To hear from the applicant at the next meeting, but not the public, or vice versa. Seem to have heard from everybody, close the public hearing, schedule a workshop meeting. The public will certainly be entitled to. Watch and listen to what you decide, what you talk about. And that way, maybe there would be consensus. And if it's a motion to deny, we can talk about the findings of fact. So it's also gonna be, don't forget a recommendation to the town council on the zone change. So that would be my suggestion. And if we can actually pick that date while everybody's here tonight for that meeting, I think that's necessary too, since we don't have a lot of time between now and the next meeting.
I agree.
Sounds good.
So so I think the first thing you want is a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Right, and Armin, so roll call, Armin Spolati.
Aye.
Even Katz.
Aye.
Chuck Millard. Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. I'm just reading my list without, Tony Mergo. Tony, you're muted.
Aye.
Brian Clark.
Aye.
And Jerome Squatrito.
Aye.
Thank you. So the public hearing is closed.
So can we see if we can find the date? Now, the governor's order, the executive order on Zoom meetings. Will expire on March nineteenth. So if it's going to be beyond, we don't know what's gonna happen, if there'll be a new one, an extension or not. If it's gonna be beyond the nineteenth, it should probably be in person. If you want to have it even in person before then, it it can be. Just the problem is, you know, where are you gonna have it with enough room for people? Even though they're not gonna be able to speak if they want to be there to hear. In a way, if you have the, if you had the Zoom meeting, the workshop. Everybody would be able to hear.
Does the workshop have to be advertised?
Yes. No, it doesn't have to be advertised in the newspaper. It just, it has to be posted. It's a continu- it's a, it's a meeting, it has to be posted on the Secretary of State's website, noticed. But it doesn't have to be advertised in the paper.
Well, is there enough room in the Burnside Building for us to sit down and people spread out?
I think so. Yeah. So Andy, so it doesn't, so. This would be continued to a date certain, but that date certain is the workshop date, correct?
But but I think we're gonna have two separate motions. We're gonna continue.
Continue to the April meeting.
To continue the April meeting for the decision, but also schedule a workshop in between. I I mean, I'm not sure, I take that back. I think we'd be continuing it to, we'd actually continue this. We've closed the public hearing, but it's still this part of it. It's still, we've closed the public hearing, but it would still be this meeting. We would continue. The workshop is really just a word. It doesn't mean it immediately. Public meeting is the same, but it's just not a public hearing, so we would continue it to that date. With the understanding that it's gonna be further continued to the day in April for decision.
Correct. So.
How does?
April fourteenth is the meeting, I think.
So how does the twenty, how's the twenty second? Of this month, but.
March twenty second?
Or the twenty ninth? I'm just looking at di- different nights, you know.
I can't do the twenty second.
Yeah, I I can't either.
About the twenty fourth, two weeks from tonight?
I'm open for that one.
Something came, I think I had something on the twenty fourth. What do I have?
I've got something on the twenty fourth.
How about the twenty third?
Twenty third I can do.
Me too.
That's a Wednesday?
Yeah.
The Wednesday, yeah. And we're assuming the Burnside would be available, even if, although that's not a council meeting, so.
No, the council meeting is the thirtieth.
Whenever, and all the workshop, budget workshop meetings of the council are next week, right?
They do have one on the twenty third, but those are in town hall.
Okay.
I mean, they they really don't like to have board meetings on their meeting nights.
But if that's just a budget workshop meeting, that wouldn't be a problem.
Workshop, yeah. I I I would assume it wouldn't be a problem. I mean. We could do it on the sixteenth, if you want to do it, that's, you know, next week.
I can't make the sixteenth. I don't think. So the twenty third is every day here? Um, so the twenty-third is every day here? Is there anyone who cannot make it on the twenty-third?
I can do the twenty-third or the sixteenth.
Yeah, I can do either.
How about Andy, can you do the sixteen?
Probably. I said I was available for something else, but I don't think they've scheduled it yet. So I could, I could do the sixteenth, I guess.
Um, Jerome, how about you?
Yeah, I, I, I don't work.
And, uh. Tony, you said the sixteen?
Where are we gonna?
That's good.
And Steve.
Yep, I can do it, Diane.
And it's gonna be Zoom or?
No, in person.
In person.
Well, you could. On the sixteenth, you could still do it by Zoom if you wanted to.
I'd rather have a, a Zoom. But I'm only one.
Well, you're the chair.
Person, that's all.
Everybody else wants to be in public? You wanna be in a meeting, open meeting? Why you wanna Zoom?
I'm either way. Either way.
Yep, I, I can go either way, either.
We'll do Zoom again.
Okay.
That way I could. Be in my pajamas for this whole.
Are we doing it, uh, Diane, you wanna do it at six or seven or what time?
You, you decide. I'm open.
Jerome, you wanna do it earlier or seven?
Well, do you think it's gonna be a? A long meeting?
Um, uh, yeah, and I don't, I can't really make it before seven.
Seven, seven, seven o'clock.
Alright.
Seven o'clock on the sixteen.
That's a Tuesday.
No, that's a Wednesday.
Wednesday, alright.
One question on that. So this is a workshop meeting, public hearing's been closed. You want the applicant on that day to be available for questions? What do you anticipate? Or just bored into play?
No, the board would just be discussing it. You're welcome to a, you know, a watch. But we, we don't expect to be eh eh entertaining any questions from anybody at that point.
But the goal of this meeting is to, to, to continue of the meeting we're having right now is to get something in kind of a memo format for the applicant.
Yes. Right.
And I just wanna make sure.
Exactly, and if there's a desire to reopen the public hearing. That would, that would have to be presented for the April meeting, for the April fourteenth meeting.
Right.
Um, but I just don't want people to be misled. I think, I think it'd be best to have the ground rules up front, that nobody. Nobody other than the board members and staff would be talking next week.
And Andy, if we, and, and if we reopen the hearing, do we have to re-advertise it?
Think so.
Um.
I think so.
I thi- I think so. So if we reopen the hearing, we would have to, you know, we'd have to have the motion to consider it. And we'd have to re-advertise it, so it probably wouldn't actually even happen on. It, unless, eh, time-wise, we might not have it in time to do for, for that April date.
Boy, you only need, uh, a week or ten days, right?
Yeah, you need one week in the newspaper, ten days postcard, so we would be able to do it.
Well, it's really, yeah, it's a newspaper where it comes out too, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sandra, um, Sandra Allen, is she, she's still on the call. Sandra, can you, can you do the sixteen? I almost forgot to ask you. The sixteenth at seven?
You're muted, Sandra.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, um, it's the, what date was that?
The sixteenth, it's a Wednesday, March sixteenth?
Next week.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Next Wednesday at seven.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Or do we have anything else?
That's it.
Um, I think we need to have a vote on continuing this to, um, March sixteenth at seven PM by Zoom.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor? Roll call vote, Armin Spalati.
I.
Even Katz.
I.
Tony Mergo.
I.
Brian Clark.
I.
Jerome Squatrito.
I.
Great. Hey, I'll set up a Zoom and post the meeting.
Now we can make a motion to close.
Adjourn, yes.
Adjourn.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Here's second.
Second.
Diane?
Uh, Armin Spalati.
I.
Even Katz.
I.
Tony Mergo.
I.
Brian Clark.
I.
Jerome Squatrito.
I.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, or, or is it good morning? Have a good night.
Good night.